Welcome to the November 13, 2024 School Committee Meeting. Item 1.1, District Vision and Core Values. The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core values. In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment: We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration: We work together while keeping student needs at the center of all decision-making. Community: We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. Item 1.2, Statement by Chair Video or Audio Recording of Meeting. This School Committee meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the town of Barnstable's Government Access Channel. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30, Section 20, the Chair must inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Item 1.3, The Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's pledge of allegiance is being led by two of our Barnstable United Elementary students, Vaika Tolaredis, grade four, and Givante Hutchinson, grade five. Would you like to come up?
Yes.
We have a highlight in education, but before we start that, I'd like to give our two guests from Barnstable United a chance to share with us and tell us what's going on.
My name is Victoria Solaredes, and I am in fourth grade at Barnstable United Elementary School. My teachers this year are Hannah Vishon and Ms. Kim Cole. It has been a great start to the school year. Did you know that there are over 720 students at BUES? To make our school community feel closer together, we are broken into houses. There are six houses in the school, three in fourth grade and three in fifth grade. Each month, we have house meetings where we focus on a different core quality to help make school a better place. So far this year, we had a September meeting where we focused on respect, and an October meeting which was about responsibility and ownership. And we are currently learning about safety for the month of November. I also wanted to explain something that is new this year to BUES. We have Dreambox challenges every two weeks. Dreambox is a computer program that helps support what we are learning in math. Last year at this time, students averaged 2.7 lessons per week. And as a school, we completed 17,102 lessons last year at this time. This year, in the same timeframe, students are averaged five lessons per week. And as a school, we have completed 32,439 lessons. And the best part is, the classroom in fourth and fifth grade that completes the most lessons during our competitions gets sor tickets and a Dreambox trophy. Thank you so much for listening to me this evening. I hope you all have a great night.
Good evening, school community members. How are you all doing today? My name is Givante Hutchinson. I have been going to BUES for two years. It's been a great time there. I love to learn, and I have teachers who help me. I was in Florida in third grade, and I struggled in school. I would sit there and wonder what to do, even when they would explain it. In fourth grade, I had Ms. Sheen and Ms. Tennis. They were great teachers. They were nice and fun. They would make me come over and work with me if I was stuck on a question. She would give me the sprinkle fingers if it let me know that I could do it. It gave me a boost. Ms. Sheen and Ms. Tennis always wanted to help. This year, I have Ms. McGinnis and Ms. McPortland. They are two smart and intelligent teachers. They let me be myself, and they try to go out of their way to help me. We earn points in class for doing well in enrichment and getting all of our work done. If the class earned enough points, we spin the wheel and we get a special prize, like a pajama day or extra recess. The teachers are caring. It's a safe place and a good spot to be. We have a dance on Friday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It is for all BUES students and parents. Stay tuned. I can't wait to go. At recess, we have BHS students come play with us. They are fun and have skills in football, soccer, and basketball. One of them is on the football team, and he moves like Tom Brady. They are teaching us about sportmanship and how to be a good teammate. Have a good rest of your night.
School Committee Comments. Peter?
Gee, thanks, guys, for the update, what's going on in the school. You two are great ambassadors for your school. Well done, you guys.
Thank you.
Yes, well done, good speaking. I know it's not easy, and you guys are growing into gifted orators, gifted public speakers. I'm interested in this school dance on Friday. I would be there. I have a commitment at Bridgewater State University, where some of you will go on to attend, but are we excited for the school dance?
Yeah.
I'm excited, and I'm gonna have to make the next one to get out there, to participate. And I also like the fact that some of our upperclassmen at the high school are coming down to spend time with you guys and hang out, and some of the football players and so on and forth, and that was an enjoyable thing. We have some of our football players who are still going in the playoffs, moving like Tom Brady. I'm glad to hear that.
Excellent job. A lot of adults come up here and get really, really nervous to talk because of all the people and the cameras and all of that stuff, and you did a really, really good job. So excellent, and be very proud of yourselves. Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was nice to hear. You have to tell Mrs. McGinnis that I said hello, Mrs. Bent. Great job. I was in your school about a week ago and noticed how clean and bright and respectful the students must be in that building. So I think your work that you're doing as ambassadors is improving the whole environment of the school, and I would be there every day if I could. So have a great night. Thank you for coming, and you'll be able to watch yourselves. You can go watch the video when you get home. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So backing up a little bit to our highlights for education. Item 2.1, we have the Barnstable High School Environmental Science and Technology Program.
Thank you all for having us today. My name is Mike Smith.
And I'm Greg Hill.
We're two of three of the environmental science and technology teachers at the high school. We wanted to kind of give you guys a little presentation of what we've been doing in the program over the last five years. In 2019, we were established. We're the first and only, I think, Barnstable Public Schools state-approved Chapter 74 program. With that, that basically makes us vocational teachers, Greg, myself, and Lilly Thomas, who couldn't be here. She's in a master's program right now and taking grad class. We are all vocationally certified teachers for environmental science and technology pathway. In terms of our enrollment, in the last five years, we've significantly increased that. Currently, we have roughly 10 sections of environmental science and technology. Our intro class has the most. That's considered like an exploratory program with our freshmen. We have environmental science and tech one, two sections of that with 16 students each. Our environmental science and tech two, which is more field-based, it's a double block for those students. We have nine students in that. And then ESNT 3 is an internship independent study capstone project with six students in that. Our enrollments increased in the last year, which is great. We're always looking to try to expand the program. The program itself, a lot of what we end up doing here is classroom-based learning and projects. Through that, you can see up here, we have a lot of kind of ecosystem-based setup. So we have a lot of tanks, freshwater, saltwater. We have aquaponic systems. We're in the process of putting together tanks for cephalopods, which are octopus, squid. And a lot of what the students end up doing in this program is they are designing these systems, they're building them, they're maintaining them. For us, we try to create model ecosystems so that when they're in their junior and senior year, they're out in the field, they're able to actually visualize what's happening on a larger scale. Particularly with our aquaponics and hydroponic systems, we create representations that simulate the complex interactions of living things, their environment, and then also the effect of people on those environments. For our kids, they're monitoring pH, dissolved oxygen. They're looking at a tank and saying, oh, what's happening in the tank right now? Algae's growing everywhere. They have to kind of problem-solve with that. So by the time we end up getting into the field, you know, they're able to actually look at it on a larger scale. Big part of what we do in terms of our programming is credentials and trainings. OSHA for us in the ESNT 1 classes, they take the general safety. That's a 10-hour construction safety and health. So it's kind of the beginning of these guys moving into, you know, their junior year and senior year where we're out, and we're in situations where we're in waders, or, you know, we're out hiking through the woods, where we want to make sure that they're constantly thinking about, you know, hazard mitigations. What are we doing out here? Why are we doing it? How are we being safe? A big one that we're gonna do this year as well, we haven't done it in two years, but we're trying to do it every two years for our seniors, is hazardous waste operators training, which is a 40-hour training program. We actually did it two years ago in this space. And it's initial training for workers who are regularly working with hazardous waste materials, cleanup, and stuff like that. Prior to teaching, I used to work for an environmental consulting firm. I was a field scientist. I did environmental site assessments, groundwater, soil monitoring, cleanup. And the first thing I did on the job was they sent me to this 40-hour training. So we're providing this opportunity for our students going out of high school. The key with our program is we want to have an opportunity for our kids to walk out of Barnstable High and potentially be working in, you know, right into the workforce. With our program as well, one of the highlights is if you go through the four years, we have an articulation agreement with four Cs, so nine credits are earned during that process. So for our kids, some of our kids are tracking towards just going right into the workforce. Some are gonna be getting an associate's, a little more training, and some are gonna specialize and go to a four-year university. So we're kind of, you know, a pretty good-sized umbrella, and we kind of meet the kids where they are with us. This year, I'm gonna highlight the seniors that we have. Four of our seniors are working for various fire departments in the town, and then two other students are working for some of our partners, Barnstable Clean Water Coalition and the Sandy Neck Beach Park. This is the crew right there. That's last year on our Diamondback Turpin release. So these guys will be, they're in their internships right now, they're kind of getting the lay of the land, and we're gonna start planning their capstone projects. The capstone project is pretty neat because it's self-driven. What they have to do is decide, hey, what do I want to do? It could be anything that we've talked about in our four years. It could be specific to their internship. So for us, we try to get them focused on something, and then there's steps along the way. And eventually, what they do is they do research, they gather data, and then they present. So one of the things I think we're gonna try to have them do is come present to you guys maybe in May before they graduate. Term one, we've done a lot of work. I think we've been out over 90 times, 90 individual trips between myself, Greg, and Lilly. We're trying to, one of our goals, our professional practice goals, is to get these students out into the community. We've done a lot of wildlife surveys. It's a pretty easy way to start, particularly with the nice weather and the fact that around here, in the fall, we have a lot of flora and fauna that could be observed. There's a couple of different spots that we've taken the kids to this year so far. This is the juniors right now. That is Dowse's Beach. We did a Seine Net survey. So we're looking at biodiversity of finfish, shellfish in the waters, you know, looking at how many different species are there, how often are we seeing them, what are their sizes? As you can see, they're all in waders. They come in, we have a process, a protocol where they come in, we start to separate everything. They have fish boxes. This is another trip that we did, and we've done a study along the Marshins Mills River. This is by Prince Ave and Route 28 over by the Mill Pond. And with this, we look at water quality, but we're not looking at it from, you know, taking a sample right from there and saying, oh, the dissolved oxygen is this, or the pH is this. With this, they're actually doing what we call a macro-invertible survey. So they've got these specialized nets, and they're looking for bugs, basically. And the bugs indicate, yeah, I know, they give you a bigger long-term picture of, you know, health of the Marshins Mills River versus like a snapshot where if I were to take a water sample, test it for dissolved oxygen, that gives me right then and there what it is. But what these do is we create this thing called the Pollution Tolerance Index, and we can actually create a rating of the water sample based on the presence or absence of these bugs. So here they are again. And before we do any of this stuff, we're always talking about what are our protocols, all right? What are some of our hazards, right? We're always doing hazcom, hazard communication with our kids. All right, here they are. This is Rose Lane, so along the Marshins Mills River. We picked four sites to actually kind of get a picture of, you know, are there any areas that are a little more impaired than others? So we're also starting some work over at Millway. This is, this is a little colder than, I think, the first picture that you guys saw. So this is September, and this was, yeah, you see the hoods on. It was getting a little bit colder. So similar type of situation that we did over at Dowse's Beach. And so we're just trying to get a look at, like, what's the difference between the south side and north side. We're starting tomorrow morning, actually, we're heading out to Otis Atwood with the juniors, and we're deploying trail cameras. So with that, we've started a little bit this year already, just talking about, you know, the different processes and protocols for that. But last year, we were able to get a number of different shots at sites all across the town. The coyote was actually behind Dunn's Pond, which was interesting enough, considering how, you know, built up the areas. One of the nice things that we've been able to do as well, between, you know, reaching out with some of our colleagues, Joanne Jozowski and the marine biology kids, as well as our last, this year's senior class, ended up working on a study that's going on right now with the Center for Coastal Studies, and they're looking at the entire, there we are, kind of Barnstable Harbor area. The finfish, shellfish survey is happening all year long, so they started in May. I think we're gonna be doing one in like two weeks. But Owen Nichols, who's the director of the fisheries at Center for Coastal Studies, has these kids out there. They're actually, you know, out there helping out, identifying different species, counting them, measuring them, and actually helping out with his study. So we're looking to be doing that, and that goes throughout the year. So we'll be January, February, March, we'll be out there with Owen and his crew. There we go. Barnstable Clean Water Coalition has been a great partner for us, not only just helping us out in terms of providing us with opportunities on their properties, but they've also taken a number of our students as interns. Heather and Lou came to the BHS the last few years, and they've been helping us out with our river herring counts. And that's usually around, like, March, we get the training. April, we start to do all the counts. Counts are important because that fishery has kind of collapsed in the last 20 years or so, and it's helpful to get that data to Barnstable Clean Water, who then turns it over to the state to look at populations. So we've had, there's the training down in the library, and our kids, there's Mill Pond, Middle Pond, and I'm not sure if this is gonna work. That was a video, but, oh no. What did I do? All right, I wanna move on. Anyway, Barnstable Land Trust, another really solid partner of ours. Last spring, the entire program, we try to do like program-wide stuff. We're trying to hook our kids early on, particularly our freshmen, because they're kind of the future of the program. Kelly Barber, who's over there, and Mericor member who's recently left, but they were awesome, gave us a tour of Fuller Farm over on Route 149, talked about what stewardship is, land stewardship, and we did a project over there of removal of invasive species. It was a nice day, thankfully, and also springtime. But this is kind of the stepping stone for a little bit more of what we're looking to do this year. We want to try to do like a multi-year project where we're looking at, you know, specific quadrats and transects. So we're looking at the same area, trying to remove invasive species, promote the return of native species, which in turn will help with wildlife, biodiversity, and doing a number of different things, looking at insect inventories, putting up trail cameras, monitoring birds, all sorts of stuff like that. We're actually out. One of the things that we're looking at this year, Greg, Lilly, and I, Lilly's actually taking a class on this right now, is we're looking to incorporate ArcGIS story maps, which is like a much better way to represent data. And so hopefully, come springtime, I think that's what we're gonna try and have the seniors do with their capstone projects. So hopefully, that'll be coming soon. Greg, you wanna take this?
Sure. So last year, we started the trout in the classroom program, and we partnered with Mass Wildlife. They brought us 200 trout eggs for the classroom, and we learned all, we taught the students all about trout habitat, and they maintained the tank, did the water quality testing. And then in the spring, we let those trout go into Hathaway's Pond. So they got to see them go into one of our ponds, and we told them, who knows, maybe you'll catch them when you're out there with your fly rod or fishing rod. So we got a couple pictures up there of the baby trout, so we learned all about the life cycle. And it was really neat to see the students kind of take ownership of testing that water quality and learning the whole process, and then letting them go. It was a cool day.
Just a couple of things that we're looking to do this year, projects that we have kind of on the back burner. Barnstable Clean Water purchased a Marshins Mill Bog properties a couple years back, maybe like one or two years back. We're looking to do some invertebrate bird surveys, vegetation surveys with them, you know, another opportunity for the kids to get into the community and actually start doing environmental science. Barnstable Clean Water Coalition also has a pontoon boat, and we were able to, two years ago, we got a couple trips in, but during the springtime, as we know, weather on Cape Cod is never cooperative, so we were able to get a couple trips out. But it was really great just to see, like, you'd be surprised how many kids have never been on a boat and live on Cape Cod. So we were able to get them out in that. We're trying to get that happening again. We've always done the Diamondback Turpin Head Start Program through Sandy Neck and Mass Wildlife. This is the fourth year that the Environmental Science and Tech Program has had it. They monitor turp and weight, shell development, tank environment. And so that was our turtle last year, and then in June, we released the turtle into the marsh in Sandy Neck. Couple more planned projects. We're looking to do some electromagnetic field monitoring of the transmission lines that have line at Kovels from Vineyard Wind, just an opportunity to get the kids out and look at newer technologies and some of the, you know, unanticipated effects of some of the stuff like wind power. Center for Coastal Studies, we're partnering with the marine biology students. We're looking to do a marine debris survey and collection, and then work with our fine arts program to create projects, art installations and stuff with the stuff that we found. Right now, we're tentatively thinking of Long Beach and looking to maybe do that in the springtime. And then most recently, we've had an opportunity come before us. I met with Pete Auger, and we're looking to utilize the halfway house out at Sandy Neck. Sandy Neck is an amazing, you know, place for environmental, you know, experiences. We're looking to do field research projects, we're looking to do naturalist trips. So we're looking to get out there a little bit more. One of the things that we've also focused on is our recruitment. I was able to come in contact with Erin Andrews, who's a seventh-grade STEM teacher at BIS, and so we did a tour of the labs. I had the juniors tour, all the students. I gave a brief, you know, I talk a lot, obviously, but I allowed them to go around and really like talk to our kids about, like, what's your experience like in this program? She was able to give us some feedback, they did some surveys, so it's all coming back pretty positive. But that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to reach out to the younger grades and really try to like focus these kids into, you know, this pathway or, you know, any of the other pathways. And I think that's one of the nice things about Barnstable High School is we're starting to look really at, like, you know, career pathways and finding out, you know, what's your niche, and where do you think you might find yourself in a career that you're gonna love, and not just kind of go, you know, hey, I'll figure it out, all right? Just give them a little bit of an idea. So this was a great day, and it was nice to see the juniors too, because they come in and they really stepped up, and it was the younger kids, I think, that really gravitated towards them, and so it was a nice experience. So, and that's all we got for you.
All right. School Committee Comments?
Sure. That is great work, Mike and Greg. Fabulous. And wow, it seems like this program is really growing. I was there when you were first starting this, and to see this, and I'm, you know, however many years ago that was.
Well, it was right before the pandemic, so I won't forget.
Yeah, so it's, how this has grown is incredible. Very, very impressive. I actually saw you guys at Marshins Mills. I don't think it was the bug trip, I think it was the herring run.
Okay.
Okay. I saw you guys getting out. And as you know, if there's anything we can do in the oyster farm, Scorton Creek Oyster Farm, I'd be happy to help you out. Maybe in the spring, it's a little cold out there now, but happy to help. Congratulations, you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Andre?
For me, it's good to see former colleagues work together over the years. I was quite encouraged when you opened with the vocational certification that you've acquired in order to have this program, so that we're having these vocational opportunities in Barnstable. Students don't have to go elsewhere to receive the skills, the training, and the mentorship that you guys are providing. Secondly, you mentioned that nine credits towards their college education are being obtained through this program. And then, I gotta watch myself, because I have the gift, I think I have the gift for gab, so I'm not gonna go on, but I didn't mind listening because you mentioned a number of opportunities, and then further opportunities within the program that you are foreseeing down the road. You know, we're a peninsula, we're a coastal community. So all of these things that you're doing, the students walk out of Barnstable High School, they walk onto West Main Street, take a right, take a left, and it's right there for them to utilize these skills that they have. So to Peter's point, we've worked together over the years, building this program up. Then obviously, we had the pandemic, but you've hit the ground running since we've been back, and this program is just tremendous, what I'm seeing, and, you know, continuing more and more. Some of these pictures I did have in my, you know, the best tip Barnstable, but I'm glad that you took them from me, and people can see.
What you folks have done is, like, I remember coming when the government What you folks have done is, like, I remember coming, when the governor came, and Mike and I, we talked, like, when we were touring the lab, so that was what, 2019?
So it would be '21, maybe?
Twenty-one, okay, when the lab opened. It's just, I can't believe, a couple of things. First of all, I always love when educators come and talk about whatever they're educating, because the passion that you have in that excitement is like palpable, which goes through to the kids, it makes them excited about it, right? So it's no, it's kind of not, it's kind of obvious that it would keep growing because your passion, you guys' passion, and is, but yeah, what an unbelievable thing. And I always have pushed since I got on the school committee for pathways, because I am 100% behind pathways, because as I've said a thousand times up here, it's not only the kids that want to go into environmental sinus, but the kids that don't. They try it, and they're like, okay, you know what, I liked it, maybe I want to go a different avenue, right? So it's, that's just as exciting, because before you start spending a lot of money on college or pick a career that you're going to be in for the next 32 years or however long, for the next 50 years, and then you realize, oh, this wasn't what I thought. So that's, and the fact that you're giving them the outside experiences of really doing the job, not just learning it in the textbook, that, anything we can do, like Peter said, anything we can do, please don't hesitate to reach out to us, because you're doing an amazing job, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
There isn't much I can add to that. I'll be interested in looking at the stats when you do your reporting for Chapter 74 to see how many students are going immediately into some type of career, immediate workforce, and then also see how many are either concurrently taking college classes or moving on to environmental science. I think we're in a wonderful timeframe so that students can do both, especially with the free educate.
Lastly, I'd just like to say, she never gets any credit, and she's sitting back here. Jen Borgerson has been key in this entire thing, and I'm sure Greg and Lily would concur with me, but we really appreciate her support, and that's, you know, it takes a team, for sure.
Yeah, takes a team, but it's great, and I think hitting those lower grades is a key for continuing the success. You'll be outgrowing, you'll have too many students pretty soon.
Hope so.
Thank you so much.
If you ever want to tour with us, we'll take you out in the field, just tell us your boot size, okay?
Yeah, thank you. Our student envoys must be at some extracurricular, so we will move to public comment, item 3.2. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and 30 minutes total. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement, or the individual will request an item to be placed on a future agenda. The chair will also allow public comment at her discretion during the meeting. Is anybody here for public comment? You can come on up. Remember to state your name and village.
My name is Brittany Burt, and I am from Marsden Smills. I am here to continue to talk about the building updates and what's going on at BUES. So there was an email that was sent down on October 22nd that stated, "A structural engineer has inspected the building envelope, attic, roof, gutters, drainage. We expect a report and recommendations to be forthcoming, which we will share with the community." Additionally, a mechanical engineer has been on site to inspect the HVAC. They will provide a report and recommendations as well. My questions are, have those reports been received by the district, and when can we expect to receive them? I do also want to note that the email that was sent on November 4th was not received by many parents until after 6:00 PM. That might be something to look into if emails are not being sent out correctly. I personally received the email at 6:18 PM, and it was greeted, "Good morning, BUES families. While I greatly appreciate the option to attend the informal meeting at the BUES library, I do feel less than a 48-hour notice the day after our presidential election was a bit off-putting. Many people were not able to attend on such a short notice. A lot of people didn't even know about it. I think with all the election news, it was hard to focus on anything else. I also think that the emails regarding the building update should be going to every family in the district and not just families at BUES. There are many, many families who have children as incoming students next year or the year after that are trying to follow along in a Facebook group on the progress so they can decide what is best for their child." One last thing that I wanted to share was I took my son, who is a fifth grader at BUES, to an allergist. They did a scratch test on his back, they tested him for 20 different things. This is what his back looked like after. The most prominent allergies are dust and mold, specifically the mold that was found in the school. The allergist we saw knew about the mold situation in the school, as she's been seeing many children recently, so she tested for specific types found in the school. When Dr. Brock was here, she had mentioned asking the allergist to rate the allergy mild, medium, or severe. According to the allergist that we saw, this is not a thing. You are either allergic or you are not allergic. She also had said that regardless of how mild or severe you may react, you are allergic, and you should do your best not to be exposed to it. She also stated that even without an allergy, they shouldn't have mold in the school.
Thank you.
I was right on the dot.
Hi, I'm Gillian Tusco, I'm from Centerville. I'm here to talk about the mold, again. I did bring this up at the informal meeting, but it's worth mentioning again because of how confusing this all is. I know that you guys use the School Dude app or whatever it is to do the tickets, like, there's a problem, there's mold here, send in the ticket. But why are we not privy to that information? Like, I know you said you're working on it, but like, these really vague emails that we get every couple of weeks with like a giant, long description of what has been done is not working for us. We need to know, step by step, what's being done. If there's a ticket goes in for mold, I want to know. If the ticket is then being in progress, I want to know if it's in progress. If someone picks up the ticket and says, oh, I'm going to fix this problem, I want to know. If someone then fixes the problem, I want to know. We don't know any of this. And then we get these long emails saying, oh, we fixed this, we fixed that, but it's like, we, there's been a lack of transparency so far, it's very hard to trust, and on top of that, there's so many different aspects of this. It's not a, the mold is because of one thing. There's mold from a bunch of different things, and yeah, you can fix the HVACC by turning it off or all these different things, but there still is a mold problem, and shutting off the rooms is not a solution. And we are not privy to the information that it would be helpful for us to decide if we want to, like, I have an incoming third graders which go to the school next year, and we have until May to decide school choice, but how can we decide that if we don't have the information about what's going on in the school? And again, that meeting did not have enough notice for people to show up. People have other things they're doing, and in order to rearrange their schedules, needed more than 48 hours of notice. So I just, the lack of communication is very stressful, and none of us are mold experts, so for us to even be breaking it apart is challenging enough, but there needs to be transparency. We need to know that the problems are being solved, like, the problems are in multiple different areas of the school, multiple different rooms. We want to know, is room 241 okay or not? Where, why, where is the mold coming in from in room 241? What, like, it's just, there's not enough information, and you can't do school choice later on in the year. So if we don't make our choices now, we're going to be in the same predicament we're in right now, where our kids are stuck in a moldy school and sick. So we need that information quickly, and I get that everything takes time, but there's no time to waste when our kids and staff are still sick. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Courtney Delanda, I'm from Hyannis. I come again to, from Barnstable United, a concerned parent, and I can tell you right now, I am not going away. As you may know from the first time I spoke, my son is already immune compromised being in this building. We just had a visit with his neurologist, who is almost certain he is seizing because of the mold issue. He can't determine it right now, but he's doing his best to try to figure it out. My son's also an asthmatic, so whether he's allergic to the mold or not, the mold is going to cause him to have respiratory issues. Now, last Friday, my son was at school for two and a half hours before the nurse is calling me and telling me that he is now being rushed to Cape Cod Hospital. I now worry, every day I'm going to get this phone call. I shouldn't have to worry if he is going to be seizing at school or at home because of this situation. I want to know what is being done, when are things being scheduled to be done? I need a timeline of everything that's being done. I think we are owed this, that much. I mean, at this point, I feel like it's a slap in the face that we're not seeing all this transparency. And I'm sick and tired of having to worry to send my kid to school every day, and because of the program he's in with the neck room, I don't have another option. I have Barnstable. So I expect Barnstable to step up and do something, not just for my son, but for every student that steps foot in that building, along with the faculty, because it's not fair to them either. I'm just, I'm beyond fed up at this point. I was off Cape at a doctor's appointment and got that phone call that my son's being rushed. Now it's going to take me 40 minutes just to get to him. A child who has no idea what's going on, why he has to be in this ambulance, and hooked up to all of this. And to see your child in distress like that, or to wake up in the middle of the night because he can't breathe with purple lips, is not something I wish on anyone to ever have to see, and I've had to see that because of this issue. I need more answers, and I need them now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment? All right, public comment is now closed. School committee comments and subcommittee liaison reports. Peter?
Yeah, just a couple of things. As always, it was an honor to attend Barnstable High School's National Honor Society induction ceremony last week. It's always great to see such fine scholars achieving academic success in their high school journey, and well done to all, it was a beautiful ceremony. I had just written down some notes and kind of piggybacking on what these parents said. I'm just looking for any latest updated BUES, if we have any, regarding the mold situation. I know we got a report on November 4th that addressed some concerns, a few number of spaces with slightly elevated areas of common mold spores, but not at a dangerous level, it said. One area that was noted was the assistant principal's office, which had high levels, and that office is now currently closed. Sarah, is there anything new at all to update regarding the situation at BUES?
I do have an update, and I can do it during my report, if that works.
And that's all.
Okay, thanks, Peter. Andre?
Yes, for me, just want to start, I was able to attend last week the MASC, MAS Joint Conference held here in Barnstable at the Emerald Resort on Scudder Avenue in Hyannis. This is a collection of school committee members and school superintendents from across the state, and this is the third or fourth year I've gone. To the point, just talking with other school committee members, Cambridge, Arlington, Woburn, you name it, about what they're seeing in their districts and how to address certain issues was quite helpful. Commissioner Johnston gave a keynote speech on Wednesday addressing the kind of vision for the school year, but also specifically looking at question two, which passed and is going into effect this school year. I believe the first iterations will be, I don't believe, December is when we're going to start to see the state shifting their graduation requirement not to include the MCAS examination, and he clarified that. And again, a good conference and a good lot of opportunities in terms of what we can do here in Barnstable. In terms of public comment, for me, I have been encouraged by the communication that I've been seeing related to mold at BUES. But as was noted, October 22nd, I saw an email, it listed a number of things, okay, you know, where we're on it. Was not able to attend the talk on November 6th myself, I would have liked to have been there, but I wasn't able to attend. But I kind of echo the sentiments of the community that it's been close to three weeks since that communication, and, you know, having follow-up is essential to many of things, many of the things that were noted in that email, i.e. testing, air quality, kind of so on and forth. We need this on a consistent basis, whether that be weekly, bi-weekly, I think a month is too much, frankly, given what's going on. I think we need to be hearing multiple times each month about what the situation is at this specific school in order to alleviate the concerns of our community and make it clear that the building, as has been espoused firmly, is safe for all occupants. In conclusion, I wanted to, and I wasn't able to do this at the last meeting, I wanted to recognize John Patrickwin, on 26 years of service to Barnstable Public Schools. He worked in our custodial department and moved on to retirement. Wasn't, again, able to mention this at the last meeting, but we have our retirement dinner at the end of the year. I think it's well done. I think it's dignified and respectful for those staff members who reach that notable achievement. But John Patrickwin, 26 years of service in the custodial department. And Chair, my slides would be at the end.
I didn't have anything, but after listening, I just look forward to, other than just, I look forward to hearing the report about BUES, and I'll ask my questions is after you give your, your kind of synopsis of just where things are, but that's all I have.
All right. The policy subcommittee met on Friday, October 25th, and we reviewed policies that are later on the agenda, one on public, two on public comment, and one on the attendance. I was able to attend the ROTC establishment ceremony. The students were quite impressive, looked great, they had their maneuvers down, they were very, very professional. And I did have a short time where there was a gathering afterwards, and I was able to speak with a few of the students, and they expressed how much they liked the program and how much they feel they've received from being in it. So that was nice to hear. I attended the meeting with the parents at BUES. It was informal chatting, and a lot of, a few, weren't a good number of people there, as you mentioned, but they had a lot of good suggestions and came up with some things that we may not have thought about, so I hope those continue. I want to thank Principal Wojcowski, he also was there and was able to address more specific building questions. And that's all I have. So we'll move on to item 3.4, superintendent's report. Oh.
Yes, I have a few slides. More than a few, but we're going to move expeditiously through this. Indeed, we do have our challenges, but as I say, Barnstable is a large, it's diverse, and it's a dynamic school district, so every month, there are a plethora of things happening. So Reed Happy is a nonprofit organization that specializes, that places handmade pillowcases and books in the hands of children. Our third grade students were lucky to have Marie Ambrose, the founder of, the founder visit their classroom. Each student was given a hard Each student was given a hard copy of a book and shared What Isabel Wanted by Candace Fleming, a chapter book, and handmade pillowcases. This was at BCIS. This was the John Bunyan, let me pull this up. So second graders at Hyannis West finished their unit on tall tales and exaggerations. They celebrated having flapjacks with John Bunyan, excuse me, Paul Bunyan, who showed up and was able to spend time with them. Moving over to Barnstable, West Barnstable Elementary. Stephanie Seals visited to share her book, My Daddy is a Cowboy, and work with third grade students. We want to thank the Cobb Fund for this experience and having Stephanie Seals visit our schools. Moving over to Centerville Elementary, the Doug Flutie Autism Foundation donated this communication board for the students at Centerville Elementary to be able to use. This is located in the playground, and we want to thank the Doug Flutie Foundation centering on autism. We're going to move over to West Villages Elementary now, where Manny Nagaira, excuse me, in advance for the pronunciation, visited to talk about anti-bullying and did a presentation for the students that was received encouragingly. This is Manny Nagaira talking about anti-bullying at West Villages Elementary. We're going to head over to Hyannis West, where students, this is a nursery Olympics at Hyannis, excuse me, excuse me, no, they were playing with their not-to-drop-the-water activity. I apologize. Not-to-drop-the-water was this activity at Hyannis West. We're going to look at students at BWB combined their skills in CKLA to create pumpkins in the style of Yayo Kuzma, students at BWB. I have this one correct. We are at Hyannis West now, where we're going to see some familiar faces at Hyannis West, where they put on their Alice in Wonderland event. So students dressed up, costumes over at Hyannis West, and this is the Alice in Wonderland presentation. Sorry. Kayla Cottingham, former teen librarian and New York Times bestselling author of My Dearest Darkest, This Delicious Death and Practical Rules and Curses for Witches, came to talk with our seventh graders, Team Craigville students, about how to write stories. During the workshop, they walked through how to incorporate various elements of fiction in order to write compelling stories, which students allowed to walk, excuse me, with concrete ideas in terms of how to write spooky stories. Over to Barnstable United Elementary School, pull this up, where we had Fordham University's Ms. Kalen Barnes hosted an incredible professional development day for the fifth grade students, excuse me, fifth grade ELA teachers. It was a time where including prizes, thanks to Ms. Barnes, and we appreciate your time, effort, and talent immensely. Just went over this in terms of the wonderful program that Mr. Smith and Mr. Hill are running at Barnstable High School. These are some of the students from the intermediate school coming over to participate and create that connection between the two grades. This is at Barnstable Intermediate School, excuse me, where the students created masks, let me pull this up, I apologize, to signify their expressions. Don't have it in front of me, but again, at Barnstable Intermediate School. This is our pep band, BIS, that's participating with the high school pep band. This was at a recent football game, I believe it was against La Salle Academy, a bake-off by the French Honor Society at Barnstable High School. This is Mr. Dumis's class. I do have this. Introduction to Criminal Justice was treated to a series of hands-on activities with members of the Hyannis Fire Department. Barnstable alum John Mendy, Kalen Daly, and Brendan McDonald were accompanied by Rebecca Tatzell of the Hyannis Fire Department. At Barnstable High School here, the BHS digital photography students put together an Andy Warhol-inspired pop art photography project. Along with being a painter and screenwriter, Mr. Warhol was taking photos of his friends. The students took black and white photos and removed backgrounds and printed them out behind transparencies. Ms. Almeida, a bilingual school advice, school guidance counselor at Barnstable High School, recently hosted a successful Portuguese parent workshop on the 24th. Nearly 60 BHS families attended and engaged in meaningful discussions and shared valuable feedback through surveys. These are students who scored at a high level on their MCAS and received the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Award. Congratulations to these BHS students. They scored advanced in three categories: English Language Arts, Math, Biology, Physics, or Technology. They scored advanced in three. This is Mr. Shea with our students at the Barnstable Bistro. As was mentioned, I was very proud to attend the JROTC induction ceremony. We have, I believe, 60 students already enlisted in the program and growing. It was tremendous. Mean Girls is coming up, folks. Make sure to check it out, starting November 21st, and playing the 22nd and the 23rd as well. The Barnstable Winter Concert will be available in December. The Rolling Red Rally will be taking place prior to the Thanksgiving Day game at the high school. The students on the football team had their teachers dress up with their jerseys. Tremendous. I wanted to note our elementary students, this is the Silver Bullet Mites that captured the Super Bowl last weekend, and the Silver Bullet Midgets, these are our seventh and eighth grade students, captured their second Super Bowl championship in a row. Our girls soccer team participated in a cancer awareness game wearing pink jerseys. Want to give a shout out to our Barnstable soccer team, a number of awards, including the league MVP, Marcelo Diamentino. Another congratulations to the volleyball team, league MVP, Molly Gleason, and a number of other, number of other, excuse me, first team awardees, excuse me. Our golf team, another MVP, this is Colin Gleason, along with his teammate, a number of players in the golf team, Colin the MVP in all-league awards. And I wanted to, in conclusion, recognize the Barnstable cheerleaders who finished third in the divisional meet, Division One meet, for their successful season. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Andre. Item 3.4, superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. I have a number of things, so I'll try to make my way through it, but there's a number of things that have been happening and want to share with the school committee and the community. I'll start with the BUE update, knowing that many people spoke about it this evening. And I was going to walk back a little bit, just for the sake of any audience members and community members, townspeople who are watching from home, who may not know any of the updates since the October 2nd meeting. So this may be a little bit repetitive from what people already know. But at the last October meeting of the school committee, we did talk about having a community conversation, which was then scheduled on October 8th, and families and some staff were here to talk with Dr. Marina Brock, who did some initial tape sampling and some assessment of the school building here locally to follow up from the DPH reports. And I really appreciate her being here. I do know that there have been folks who have reached out to her individually. She has shared her contact information, and that has provided some one-to-one resource. And so that is still an invitation, and her contact information is on the BUES website. We developed and issued an RFP for mold prevention and environmental health specialists. At the October 2nd meeting, we did talk about having a fresh set of eyes working with the district. So the RFP criteria includes preferentially new to working with the Barnstable Public Schools. The bids will be due on November 18th, and we've assembled a team to review the bids that come in. Kathy Bent, as chair of the school committee, will sit on that team, along with Doug Ballanger, our director of facilities, Tammy Cunningham, as the deputy director for human resources, and then we have two parents who are willing to serve and appreciate that, and two teachers who will serve. So I think it's a team of seven to look at the bids that come in for that contract. It will be an on-call service and a resource to the entire district, because we are concerned and interested in maintaining healthy indoor air quality across all of our schools, and it'll be for up to three years. The company or individual will be able to do assessments and make recommendations, and I think also provide some education and training, in particular, faculty and staff, because there are a lot of things that we can do in our buildings to work together to maintain indoor air quality. We had the Department of Public Health out to complete indoor air quality reports at Centerville and Hyannis West. This was not in response to any particular concern, but I think Centerville was the school that hadn't had any indoor air quality report in the district. Not sure why, but it had never happened. So DPH came out to do that. And then to Hyannis West, we are also hoping to get BWB reassessed, because it's been some time. So just being proactive to get some indoor air quality reports to some schools that haven't had them in a while. To my knowledge, we don't have those reports just yet, but there was a helpful one or two-page guide that came out from the Department of Public Health at the end of the summer, coinciding with the Centerville visit, on what teachers can do to help promote healthy indoor air quality, and that's been issued out to the entire district through the faculty and staff newsletter. The structural engineers and HVAC engineers have been doing assessments. We don't have a report to share, but certainly will when we have it. The structural engineers are scheduled, I believe, later this week to start doing a deeper dive into the building envelope. So they're going to go to the areas of concern at BUES, including outside of the assistant principal's office, that is currently unoccupied, as well as at the rear of the building, to take bricks out and look more, in a more investigatory way, into what's going on in between the inner and the outer envelope. So that'll need to be done when students aren't in the building, because we anticipate that it'll be loud. So they are going to go and do a deeper exploratory dive to look at what's happening with any water related to the envelope. We have suffered from vacancies in the custodial unit for years, but we have worked with the department to contract custodial services out and then reassign BUES custodians, so that we're kind of not shortchanging all of the schools. Vacancies have been existing in numerous schools. Re-deploying the BUES custodians from the second shift and have a custodial contract for the second shift cleaning, under the supervision of one of our staff members there, in order to provide better custodial services across the entire district. We, as you know, did independent testing with MAC Services. The last update that was sent was November 4th, and that included the report. Since then, ServiceMaster has been in to remediate the areas that were specific concerns related to those slightly elevated mold areas, which included some screens in the classroom and included a cabinet. And then they also came in to initiate mitigation in the assistant principal's office, which is currently sealed off with air scrubbers. The interior has been cleaned, there's been scrubbing up in the ceiling, there's been ceiling tile removal, and the floor contractor will be on-site soon to look at the floor. The carpets in the counseling offices on the first floor have been replaced, and we have an FY25 capital project approval for the library carpet upstairs to be replaced, and there is a bigger carpet upstairs that will need to be a special bid project, but it's on our list. Those probably wouldn't happen until spring or summer because of all of the moves that would need to occur. Let's see. As you heard, Kathy Bent, Michael Wojcowski, and I met with several parents last week to have a dialogue and appreciate those who were able to come. Do apologize for the short notice. It's been a very busy time. Finding a date for all three of us that was, that we were going to be able to make work was a challenge in and of itself. But I think, I guess I would just invite open dialogue at any time. It doesn't have to be at regular school committee meetings, happy to pick up the phone or correspond via email. It need not wait. Dr. Brock did come in and did some additional tape testing in response to a teacher who had a specific area of concern, and we should have that report any day. But initial communication from Dr. Brock was not one of any specific concerns in that room. Let's see. We will do some follow-up testing with probably MAC Services, following all of the mitigation efforts that they came in and took a look at. A parent had suggested connecting with the northeast region of the Environmental Protection Agency, so I have reached out to them. And I also got a contact from Dr. Brock of somebody there to reach out to. So the person I reached out to is not that person, but now I have another name that I can reach out to, to get some additional government resources. We were in touch with DPH, as well as the Department of Labor Standards. The EPA certainly is another resource, and so we've reached out to them. In response to people following along, I'll take it under advisement as to whether or not to send an email out to the entire district. I'm not sure that's the direction I would want to go, but what I can do for people who are following along is post all of the communications that have gone out on the BUES website. So if parents want to go and take a look at what has gone out so far, I have an archive of all of those, all of those communications, and in my community newsletter, I can let people know that that's where they'll reside. And then I guess the last piece that came up that I would note, and I'm sure I'm missing things, there's a lot of detail that goes into this, there's a ton happening, is that please, our nurses are incredible health professionals and are here to help and here to support, and are really the liaison between families and the school if there are individual concerns and individual needs, and we will work with you. So please be in communication with our health office staff. That's the BUES update. I have some others, but if you want to pause there, Kathy?
Any BUES questions?
No, I was looking for an update, and you gave it.
Okay. Andre?
Yes, so when can we expect, again, the items that were established in the October 22nd email listed, when is the follow-up going to be to that email, to the?
So I sent one on November 4th, which I think followed up from October 22nd. If there are other items in the October 22nd email that haven't been touched on, I can go back and take a look and send something out later this week with some of these other updates.
Okay, because, again, the November 4th email, in my understanding, was for the November 6th meeting?
There was some content in there, including the information from MAC Services and the testing report.
Okay, so the community has that. And then the, how will the communication be disseminated related to the testing involving the structural envelope that's going to, you know, have to be done when no students are in the building? How will the BUES, like, how will we be informed as to when that takes place?
So we anticipate a technical report to come, and once I see the report, I'll have a little bit of a better understanding. But we'll, you know, I think we've been sharing everything, you know, pretty upfront as it comes in.
Okay, so that will be posted, again, clear. This is when the structural envelope is going to, there'll be, that will be a specific communication for that testing?
I mean, it might be bundled with some other things, but we'll send out information from the structural and HVAC. but we'll send out information from the structural and HVAC engineers.
Thank you.
Mike?
That was very thorough. That was the update. Thank you.
And I just have one question. Is, for the public, for the parents, is their process that's been established for the selection of the parents, two parent representatives for the committee? In case someone's interested?
So I asked two parents that have been offered, they offered help early on and that I've been in touch with, and so they agreed to participate.
And I don't have anything else. Thank you.
I will jump ahead in my notes. You don't know that I'm jumping ahead, but I'll switch these around to talk a little bit about ballot question number two and its impact, just to expand upon what Andre had talked about. So indeed, the Department of Education's Commissioner issued some guidance, very, very initial guidance regarding ballot initiative number two passing and immediate considerations. So just to be clear, what we know is that high school students, ballot initiative number two eliminates MCAS as a graduation requirement, starting with the class of 2025. High school students will still need to earn what's called a competency determination to graduate. The new law will change the competency determination to mean satisfactorily completing coursework that has been certified by the district. We are awaiting additional guidance, which we anticipate will come to us before December 5th, which is the date on or around which this goes into effect. There are other implications, and so there's a lot of things that they are thinking about and sorting through. In the meantime, we've had retests. So the November retests are going forward, and we're continuing with them at Barnstable High School. There are not going to be any testing changes to grade levels for MCAS. There is still a federal requirement to test math and ELA in certain grades. And then we also test science in fifth, eighth, and high school. And MCAS scores will continue to count for district-wide accountability. That's all under the federal law, and so there's no local or state changes there. The Abigail Adams Scholarship that we saw pictures of is based on MCAS scores. And so there'll be some guidance coming out about that. But I don't think there's, I don't, the ballot initiative doesn't seem to be changing that. And then MCAS is also something for which the SEAL of B-qualify students for the SEAL of B-Literacy. So that was something that came up in a call with the Commissioner yesterday, and we anticipate that that will probably still remain. And so there'll be more information forthcoming within the next couple of weeks. But that's, you know, sort of at the basic level. Wanted to just sort of frame for the community what the impact of that would be. I, too, attended the MAS-S/MASC conference last week. Just thought I would share a few of the professional learning sessions that I attended. I attended the keynote speech with Tim Shriver, who talked about something called the Dignity Index, which is an organization that he has founded in order to promote community dialogue and understanding. I went to two special education sessions. One was presented by student services attorneys related to recent Board of Special Education Appeals decisions. And then I went to a really excellent special ed presentation about special education financing. And that was very, very well done. I also saw a keynote by John Keller, who is a journalist and kind of commentator from Boston. I don't remember what channel he's affiliated with. But they had a panel, and it was somewhat of an election debrief. And so that was an interesting session. And then, consistent with what you'll see later tonight related to my continued professional practice goal, I attended the school facilities breakout session where they were talking a lot about the new opportunities that exist as it relates to heat pumps and kind of making buildings more energy efficient. And Mass Saves was there, the MSBA was there, as well as some other organizations, Green Communities, Green School Works. And there's some funding out there to support kind of becoming more green, more efficient, especially as it relates to heat pumps. So that was Thursday and Friday for me of last week, which might be a good segue into a facilities subcommittee update. We did agree at the facilities subcommittee meeting last week that I would provide a bit of an update as Jen can't be here and want to keep the full committee informed of some of the conversations that are happening. I do have a brief slide just to sort of really show some financial numbers. Thank you. So at the facility subcommittee, we do have a standing agenda item for updates on the Barnstable United Elementary School. Most of our agenda involved, our recent agendas have involved a discussion of the needs of the buildings as it relates to MSBA opportunities. MSBA stands for the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And it's a state agency that provides financial assistance and oversight for major facilities projects. So the MSBA Statement of Interest window is coming upon us within the next couple of months. And these opportunities for application run either December through March for what's called the Accelerated Repair Program or January to April for the Core Program. And since I sent this to Jen, I did make a slight change here. The biennial process is for the Accelerated Repair Program. So any accelerated repairs that we might apply for, if we don't apply in 2025, we would wait two years. The Core Program, we believe, is annual still. The Accelerated Repair Program is for projects of a certain age, and the state would help to support a certain percentage of that capital funding. So it's good to sort of strategize and prioritize some of your highest cost projects and highest priorities. This year, they are going to be supporting roofs of a certain age, windows and doors, and newly coming on the scene is heat pumps. The facility subcommittee did talk about roofs at three schools being possible applications. And you can put in multiple applications. I think we're sort of cautioned by some of the consulting architects that we're working with to do what's practical. And because we would need to be able to show in short order that we would be able to fund these, the matching part ourselves. And roofs at Barnstable High School, Barnstable Intermediate School, and West Villages were the ones most seriously talked about. We do have roofing needs at some of our other buildings, but those three are the most expensive. High School, Intermediate School, and West Villages. And then we also talked about the Core Program. And the Core Program runs, the application runs January to April. It involves things like new construction of schools, additions to schools, and major renovations. We have been, as a facility subcommittee, kind of running the numbers and trying to think about this from a financial standpoint because, again, the MSBA would assist in any new construction, additions, or renovations, should we be accepted. We'd have to be accepted to all of these. And so one of the financial pieces that Chris Dwelly put together was a bit of a synthesis related to the total investment of our maintenance costs as well as capital liabilities at the Early Learning Center and then our five K to three schools. Our five K to three schools, with the exception of West Villages, our four K to three schools are really aging. You know, we're talking about 70 years old, 80 years old for BCIS. And as you know, it's not a secret. We've had the conditions assessment report for some time. There's some pretty significant capital needs. And so kind of projecting that out over four fiscal years and really kind of taking a look at what the investment and liability is, these are some of the numbers that we came up with. And you can see some of the priorities showing up related to High West and Centerville and BCIS in particular. But as you know, BWB is also aging as well. So the facility subcommittee is, you know, sort of, I think, really actively talking about the prospect of a Core Program application, all of which, Core Program or Accelerated Repair would need to come to the school committee for authorization for me to submit. Following your potential approval, it would then go to the town council because they would also need to authorize it. But wanted to sort of raise it early and have some, you know, community awareness regarding some of the conversations that are happening at the facility subcommittee and sort of the process that would be involved as we consider this. Keeping in mind that this is a very long process. A lot of times, a statement of interest goes in and does not get immediately accepted, and districts go back with either their accelerated repair statements or their Core Program statements over multiple years before they get accepted into the process. And the idea of new construction, additions, or renovations is long, kind of a seven to 10-year runout. But we do have several really aging schools and some worries around system failures and major capital improvements that would need to go in. So something that we wanted to update you on, the facility subcommittee meeting is meeting again on the 20th.
Any questions about the facilities or MAS-C conference?
I actually just have one. So I know the, so if you go back to the amount for the, yeah, that one. So you had said roof would be BIS. If we did accelerated repairs, it would be BIS, BHS, and West Villages?
Yes, and West Villages, so.
West Villages, you said, right? So the only one that would be on this list would be West Villages?
Yes.
So would that take down that $30 million, I would assume? Because I would assume that's part of that is roofs, right?
Yeah, that would be part of that $30 million, and that would take that down. I think the idea of the other ones is that if there were to be new construction, the other four should be really carefully looked at for renovations, for new construction, potential consolidation. And you don't want to apply for accelerated repair and then turn around in a couple of years and say that you want to be part of the Core Program.
So we don't want to fix the roofs that we have a problem with and get the state to pay half the money on the roofs because we may want to go for a new school that'll be built in 10 years?
I think.
Is that kind of the rationale?
I think you want to, you need to take care of what you need to take care of. But if we're sort of limited in how many applications we feel we should put in, at least for now, we wouldn't want to put in an application for a school that we're questioning. It's where it may be long-term.
But my concern for that is, so we're not going to fix roofs on three schools that need roofs because we may, at some point, get money for a new school, but it has to go through us, it has to go through the town, which is just a very, has to go through the town council, which is very, very preliminary. Then it has to go to probably a proposition to and a half override, and it has to go to a lot more things. So we're going to let our three roofs get worse because?
We're going to need to do, we're going to need to take care of the schools and keep them safe in some capacity. There will be some questions, I think, about what capital projects get prioritized over others. But I think, just to be clear, we would need to attend to roofing issues, still attend to windows and doors for safety reasons.
Right, right, to all of that stuff. But instead, but what we would do is, what you're saying is, is we would just, we as taxpayers would foot the bill for the roofs, the windows, and the doors and not put the application in with the state to get whatever, half the money back because we may get a school 10 years down the road?
Yes, yes, yep, yep. And there's a window of time where if they've given you money, they're not going to support.
Yeah, yeah, I get that. Like, they're not going to fix all of our schools. Part of it is our problem. Okay, no, that makes sense. Okay, that's my question.
Any other questions?
Yeah. No, that's all right. You kind of filled in some of my questions. It's just that, you take the summary, $200 million, if I'm reading that right, $201 million for the whole thing. These are frightening numbers for some of the repairs in our buildings. I just had one question on the graduation requirement. I think you'd mentioned, so now we'll be, our graduation requirement would be satisfactorily completing classwork?
Yes.
What does that mean?
So we've got graduation requirements outlined in the program of studies. And so it would be what we, what you as a school committee have outlined as graduation requirements.
Yeah, two questions for me on two different issues. In terms of the MCAS graduation requirement, we would have kind of our standard in Barnstable, you know, for completion. Every district would have, you know, their standards for completion. You know, do you see, and this is just, you know, for me, you know, does that, will that affect kind of how the quality of education in Massachusetts is viewed? That we don't have that unified standard? Meaning, you know, I'm proud of the fact that Massachusetts, you know, ranks number one in public education nationally. And, you know, without this unified standard, I just, that's kind of your opinion, you know? Is that going to, you know, do you think that that would affect kind of how we are viewed statewide?
I think it's hard, it's hard to, I don't, it's hard to say, you know, on behalf of, you know, what outsiders would necessarily say about. But I think that's a critique, or that was something that was, you know, part of the argument against a ballot question? You know, there is the MAS Core, which is the recommended set of graduation requirements that the state has been recommending and qualifies a student to apply to the state, or to apply and get into state schools as MAS Core. So I do wonder that if schools aren't aligned with MAS Core, that they start shifting towards this more standardized set that is aligned with higher ed expectations for our state school systems.
Okay, again, thank you for answering that. Again, you speak for Barnstable, and you've clarified, you know, what the requirement will be for Barnstable. But just, you know, in the broader context, I just want folks to understand, you know, ballot passed, you know, that's going to be the new standard. But, you know, now, kind of, how does that affect us overall in Massachusetts was my only reservation. I know that, you know, high stakes testing, and we want to allow students to have those opportunities. You know, in terms of the questions related to, you know, this total investment and then the kind of the, you know, the possibility of going, you know, and looking at, you know, a new school building, you know, my question for you would be, you know, if not us, you know, when? Meaning, you know, I look across the Cape, you know, Nauset, brand-new building this year. Dennis Intermediate School, brand-new building two years ago. Born Elementary School, brand-new building in the last three years. Cape Cod Tech, brand-new building the last four or five years. And I could go on, I guess. So communities are building new facilities because I don't think Barnstable is unique in that many of the structures were built in the post-World War II era. Sandwich, you know, the Wing School, which was, you know, not necessarily their building, but utilized for educational purpose, knocked down, repurposed for, you know, senior housing. So building is taking place across the state and across the region. And I thank you for this analysis because it looks at kind of what we're balancing, right? You know, we need state money, you know, the roof here, there's going to be this here, there's going to be that here, there. But we're not alone in terms of, you know, the building wave across the state. And frankly, you know, on the Cape, we're towards the tail end of districts. You know, so, you know, you answered the questions. For me, you know, it's just how do we navigate this balancing act in terms of, you know, this state and the monies that they're going to give us for certain things? But then just the fact that, like, the reality, we need a new building, just like every other district on the Cape and in the state. So that, you know, that was my statement. I don't know if, you know, you've answered others, you know, it's, we have to balance those two, those two things. You know, and I think, you know, that's what the facility subcommittee will be continuing to look at with razor focus, again, because, you know, this is the reality. I've just noted the other districts, the neighboring districts that have made decisions. At some point, you know, Barnstable has to make a decision one way or the other, is my feeling.
So I just have a couple of questions about the change after MCAS is not required for graduation. My comment is simply that I think it's going to be interesting to see where our MCAS scores land moving forward. After it's not, we know our upper schools, the students are savvy. They know what all this means and may not take it as seriously. I know that part of the MAS Teacher Association push was that the teacher I know that part of the MAS Teacher Association push was that the teachers could do a better job when they didn't have to be as prescribed because they could bring more things to the classroom. So I'm hoping it, it shows our overall scores increasing because they have more flexibility. Regarding the graduation requirements, I'm wondering if there is going to be a change in the internal accountability from a curriculum viewpoint when it comes to evaluating and assessing students. It was nice having an objective standard where we knew students were meeting the state standard and being awarded a diploma that really carried some weight behind it. So I'm a bit concerned about making sure that internally we have enough structure in place to adequately make sure that, that the students graduating are graduating at that same level or higher moving forward. So that, I don't think you can really comment now. It's just what I've been thinking about and I do think it's important, especially coming off of the COVID where I think some of the students are still thinking that it's free pass because there was a free pass for a short period of time during COVID. So where they, they didn't necessarily need to meet academic requirements to move to the next level. So I want to make sure that they are, our district is graduating students that are still capable of entering the workforce or moving on to further education. And I don't have anything else for right now.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
Because we paused after each of my little segments. I did want to congratulate some of our students. The College Board has a national recognition program to celebrate top performing high school students who belong to communities historically underrepresented on college campuses. And the College Board recently announced 23, 24 awards to the following BHS students. Aiden Andrews, Riley Croto, Lenny Jean Laguna, Sabrina Pinto, Nicholas Ramos, Cole Raposo, and Ava Shay. And I just want to congratulate them. That's all.
Item 3.5 Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Thanks, Mo. So I do have a couple of slides, but just as a, to have a context, as you know, we've established a curriculum review cycle that, where we've identified content and grade level curriculum to review over a multi-year cycle through a process. At our last meeting, there was a question regarding our elementary math curriculum, where it sat in the curriculum review process, which I think I had shared with you that it was slated for the systems analysis to occur next spring, which would be spring of '26. And the question was, you know, could we move that up a year and start the process a year earlier? And, you know, I shared some concerns related to the implementation of our CKLA and you asked, could we survey the staff? And so we did. So I wanted to share the results with you today. So I have slides, I figured that would be easier than me reading the numbers. But we did ask four specific questions, one around, should we begin the curriculum review process this spring, 2025? And so the rating scale is one being, this was agreeing, like agreeing with the, the statement. So one was strongly disagree and five being strongly agree. So we had 64% of staff strongly agreeing that we should be starting our curriculum review process for elementary math this spring and 20% of our K5, I should say, K5 staff strongly disagreeing with starting this spring. So the next question, just on the back end of that, would then be, you know, the district should begin the elementary math curriculum review the following spring. And so, you know, again, seeing the flip flop of that where 44% of our staff strongly disagree that we should delay and 24% of our K5 staff strongly agree that we should delay. I should say that, so this went out to our, to four of our elementaries and BUES. We did ask staff to identify their role, classroom teacher, ESL teacher, special ed teacher, interventionist, their grade level, and then their school. So we could see that we had good representation from the various sites. We did have 91 respondents, which is about 75% of the, what we, what, yeah. Which if I could get PD responses of 75%, that'd be fabulous. So I was, I, it was a great response, you know, compared with some of our other surveys. So I did, I should have started with that. Two additional questions, just again to gauge where staff were at. So if it begins this year, so a really important part of the curriculum review process is staff engagement. We depend on them for our curriculum council, for our piloting. So we also wanted to get a sense of where people felt, you know, what would they be able to, how would they be able to engage with this? So you can see the question, if the elementary math curriculum review begins this year, we would be establishing curriculum council this spring. So again, the context, how likely would you be, how likely would you be a member of the math elementary curriculum council? And so again, one being very unlikely and five being very likely. So again, looking at what might our participation look like for staff that are, you know, their readiness to be a part of the curriculum council. So we definitely have 19 people that are very likely. And again, I would also say the, the four that they're likely. So I would say we would, should have sufficient numbers for a curriculum council.
How many, can I just ask a question? I'm sorry. How many people do you normally have on the council? Just like for the reading one, is it like 10? It doesn't have to be exact, is it like 10?
I think we have 18.
Okay.
But that includes leadership as well.
Okay.
But we try to have representation again by grade level, by school, and then role. So we want to make sure we have some sufficient.
Well-rounded.
Exactly. We wouldn't want to have all the representation from a particular grade level or, so thank you for that question. And then we have our continuation of our CKLA and our GLEAM team and we have even more people on that team this year. We, a lot of participation. So if the review begins this spring, we would start a pilot in the winter. Again, how manageable would this be alongside the implementation of CKLA? So wanting to acknowledge, you know, where people are at with the implementation right now. So again, how manageable? So the one would be very unmanageable and five being very manageable. So again, we do have, this one you'll see is much more spread and I think our school leaders that are sitting in the room, you know, have heard from their staff some of the challenges of implementing a new literacy program. And so I think this reflects it accurately. And then again, participation again of our staff is critically important. So this, how likely would you be to participate in the actual pilot? So we do need teachers to pilot, again, a good representation by school, grade level. And so our, we had 28% very unlikely that they would participate, but we had 31% very likely to participate. And then we have the neutrals and the likely and unlikely in the middle. So that is really our data universally from the group of staff. A couple of things that I just wanted to add, again, related to representation, you know, we have at each school, I focus on classroom teachers and whether they agreed or strongly agreed related to participating in a pilot. So they ranged from, we had three teachers at one school who would be ready to participate up to 11 at another school. So we again have that range. So I feel like we'd have sufficient, I just would want to make sure we have sufficient representation. By grade level, it's pretty, pretty even. We have seven kindergarten willing to, to participate up to, you know, to five. So our range is, you know, five per, by a grade level to seven. Oh, and I should include BUE. We had sixth grade four teachers and four grade five teachers that would be interested. And I don't think that that's a surprise there. We know that that, the way that the pods are designed, they're not under the implementation of CKLA. The other piece, just, we did ask for comments. There were 37 comments in total. I would say that, you know, when you synthesize those, there is definitely a strong feeling that a new math program is needed, but I think there's some division about when to actually pursue it. We have people that strongly feel we should do it now. We had comments like, as soon as possible, this is long overdue, I would strongly support a new program, would be very excited to begin working on that as soon as possible. We have people whose comments reflect that they would prefer to wait primarily because of the CKL implementation, people expressing being overwhelmed. I don't think beginning soon would be beneficial, we need more time with the ELA curriculum, people that have mixed feelings. I'm 100% on board for staff, having a new math curriculum, but right now feeling overwhelmed. So I think there is this sense of, of, of a need and an urgency, but also a, you know, kind of pause and reflection of like, what can we manage? And so just, I think to kind of close this particular topic out, and I'll take questions, of course, but just in terms of the, the sequence, the, the process, we would start around the March of 2025 to bring a group together to start looking at, you know, what we would say is the systems analysis. We would establish a curriculum council, we'd start collecting feedback from staff, students and families based on needs and priorities and parameters that would help to guide the selection of programs to pilot. In the fall of '25, we'd start to narrow the programs to evaluate throughout, through a pilot. We'd have to design the pilot, prep for the pilot, have PD for the pilot. And again, this is just reflects, I'm sure you're harkening back to all those updates I gave on GLEAM, we're just following that same process, but now I'm just giving the times with that. The winter of '26, we'd conduct the pilot, collect feedback from stakeholders involved in the pilot. And then the spring of 2026 would be the selection to get ready for implementation in fall of 2026. So that would really, so that would be, everything moved up a year. Otherwise, if we stayed on the same timeline, all you have to do is add a year to each of those that I just described. And then I think the other decision we'd have to look at is, we are slated to start looking at secondary ELA this spring is actually what's in our cycle. So do we delay that or, because there are obviously financial considerations. So that's the data. So I'll take questions. I do have a couple of other quick items, but.
Any questions? Mike?
I assume you're both looking at me. Thank you for doing it. Thank you for doing it. I appreciate it. Like I said, like, let's see what the staff wants and they kind of, it's them, right? Which in the comments that, of course, you had some people strongly disagree and some people strongly agree and people in the middle, right? So that's, that kind of reflects the comments that you're going to get, right? So just, and you went through the timeline, but just in my brain, the non educator brain. So up until next winter, it would be more or less on the council, that, that education or the math council or whatever you, whatever you call them there. They would be the ones doing all that prep work and all of that stuff. So all of the people who are going to be on that council are the ones that are doing the share of the work up until next winter, correct?
Yes. So they are really developing the structure.
They're like, yeah, they're, they're in the weeds of it from this March and all the way through, but they're in the weeds of it from this March until, so those people have to be probably, like you said, the strongly agree ones are the ones you're going to get that really want to move forward.
Yes.
The piloting, as you saw with the piloting, that wouldn't be going on until next winter. And then that would be, like, that could be the people that are kind of like strongly agree, kind of like, as you kind of described it, right? And then, so this whole program wouldn't be implemented until next year would be the pilot. Yeah, so it would be the, so it's two years down the road, really, to implement this program. So if a teacher, and I'm not, I'm not saying agree, disagree, I'm just thinking in my head. So a teacher who didn't want to be involved in the pilot and all of that wouldn't be like really affected until that, two years down the road.
Yep.
And they're doing a reading program this year, so that would give them next year to kind of become good at the reading program, continue working with it, because it's going to take multiple years to get good at any new pro, like any new thing. So, but it's not going to be implemented next year, it's going to be implemented two years down the road. And if we delay it a year, we're going to actually implement a new math program three years down the road.
Yes. And, and I think the, the, so the pilot, right, itself would take place next winter and so people would have the rest of this year under their belt with CKLA, they'd have the beginning of next year under their belt.
Okay.
We may find that some of these people that said, no way, or neutral.
But, yeah, or you may have some people that also go the other way. I mean, it is what it is. I'm not trying to like slate it anyway, but, so my thing is with the MCAS scores, the way we're going, to me, talking to a math teacher, math is kind of based on the year before. So I, for me, and I'm not an educator and if I get hate mail, that's okay because I want to hear people, but like, I, I, to me, our math scores are going in the wrong direction. So I think we need, for me, I would say, suggest, if you have a group of people that are willing to start of the year early, for me, I would suggest we start of the year early. That's, that's just, because, just because our MCAS scores just aren't going in the right direction. So we, as we did with ELA, I think we also have to kind of do it with math. And I understand that you were saying about the ELA, the secondary stuff?
Yes.
Can you just describe what that means?
Sure. So right now, we are currently under a curriculum review for K-12 health and secondary math. So we're going, so that process I just described, we're actually starting our pilot for both of those this winter. And so they'll go through that cycle. So what was slated to start this spring in the original curriculum review cycle was secondary ELA.
Okay, I get it.
And so we just have to look at.
I get it. And that's what you were saying about the financial. Okay, thank you. So that's just, I, I know I've been very outspoken about a new math program in a K through five, so like I said, thank you so much for like starting the ball rolling. Wherever the ball goes, I, I understand it, but please thank you for, for taking the time to do this when you're busy schedule.
Well, and I, I have to say, I appreciate kind of being pushed to survey staff because I do think that that was, you know, I was thinking like, you know, where people are. So I, I appreciate that. And I think we got feedback, I don't think we were surprised necessarily by the feedback. I think we heard that people were overwhelmed, but we also heard, again, that there are people that are ready for that next.
Well, the frustration in the, in the math program. Thank you.
Anybody else? No, I appreciate, oh.
Yes, I, I, I did. So it's good, thank you for the survey and, you know, the, the, the feedback. You know, the bottom line is, you know, we do need to address the, the scores across the district, but particularly in the elementary levels. You mentioned overwhelmed, that that's kind of a sentiment and I, can you maybe speak to that a little bit? You know, because I'm an educator and, you know, it's day 50, thereabouts. So the honeymoon is long gone, you know, but, you know, for me, it's progress over perfection. You know, and so, you know, yeah, you're, we're having days and the students are dealing, you know, but, you know, I'm not, you know, if I'm doing everything that I can on a daily basis, you know, to, to facilitate and, you know, there's a, a lot of things going on, you know, and new IEPs and different formats, okay. So we do the best that we can and we kind of move forward. I just, you know, I, I, that sense of overwhelm, if you could maybe speak to that, I, I don't think, you know, you know, again, if you feel overwhelmed, you feel overwhelmed, that's how, how you're coming about, about it. But if we're doing everything within our power to improve these scores, you know, then that should be a point of pride in my mind, you know, rather than, you know, if the scores, so can you, I don't know if you could speak to that feeling of overwhelm or, or if that's maybe why staff members may be, you know, less receptive to doing something. Because the bottom line in terms of my question is, we do need to do something and tackle this issue and any steps in that direction should be viewed positively, is my view.
And I think you touched on a number of things. Our teachers are perfectionists. They are now, they're in the midst of implementing a brand new literacy program and the learning the program, implementing with integrity, supporting students and making sure that they are really, again, in their minds, doing this right for their students, the demands and the time that it's taking for them. to really, you know, be learning and implementing at the same time, even with the professional development that we've had in September, that we had all last year, that we had just in November. It's a lot for teachers, and I think that's where the sense of overwhelmed is. And that's what came through in some of the survey comments. But it is truly with the implementation of a new literacy program. It's very comprehensive. It is very different from our prior reading program. So I think that it, that really, it is that, really wanting to do right by their students.
Indeed, and they are doing right by their students by making the efforts to learn this new program, integrate it, have, maintain that high standard, you know, and with that mindset and that consistency, then there's going to be positive results. It's just, again, you noted, again, we can get to that point as educators in the midst of a, of a long school year, but I never want to see that overwhelmed transfer into defeatism, you know, when we're doing everything in our power and being receptive to innovative ways, again, to, to address these scores. And as, as is noted, the scores aren't the bottom end-all-be-all. Not the bottom end-all-be-all, and, you know, particularly with the way that education has changed. You know, but they are an indicator that we want to address and see improvements. And we're, we're doing that, is my point. So that, I'd like to see more people move, leave that overwhelmed contingent, you know, and move, you know, into, you know, a more, you know, a different mindset, realizing that there is progress, good progress being made.
Mike?
Most people, a lot of people know me, and you understand that this is, I know a lot of people in this grade level that would be affected by this. And I completely understand the overwhelmingness, overwhelm-ness. And I would, I would suggest my, and that's why I kind of brought up the timeline, because I'm, if you're one of the people that are overwhelmed, I don't want you to put any more on your plate. If you're overwhelmed with the reading program, then don't put anything on your plate. And that's why I'm saying that it's two years out. That's why I'm saying, because I don't want anybody to feel more overwhelmed. And I would say, if you're feeling overwhelmed with the reading program, and like, you're doing your due diligence, and it's just a lot, because it's a completely new way of doing ELA, my suggestion is, is you don't join the council. You don't do the piloting. You're, you do your, your world, and that's where you're at. And then, but for the people, but why wait on a program if we have enough people that are willing to put, be in the weeds for the next two years? That's more what I'm saying. I'm not criticizing anybody who's overwhelmed. My suggestion would be step back. Don't be involved in the math program. As we had people that were doing the reading program that weren't, didn't step up because they were overwhelmed with what they were doing. And that's, that's, there's nothing wrong with that. I just, if we have enough people that are willing to participate in it for something that will be two years down the road, that's more what I'm looking at. Because I, I know a lot of people in this age group, and I, I understand the enormity of the reading program and go into a whole new mindset, and therefore, just step back. That's nothing wrong with that. You don't have to be on every committee. And that's, that's more what I'm saying to, to our staff is, I'm not trying to add more to your plate, honestly. It's, I'm looking at, it's a long-term, a couple of years down the road. That's, that's, if you were telling me we were gonna implement this next year, I'll be honest with you, I would have never asked you to do the survey, because that is too much. Doing two programs in two years is way too much. But where there's a year in the middle, that to me, for me, that, that helps a little bit with that. So that's, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks, Kathy.
Thanks, Kristin. I would like to get a copy, if I could, especially the comments, just read. Sometimes they're posted, but it didn't get posted. And secondary math, I don't, I don't think when we're talking about staff involvement, I know monetarily, finances, multiple new initiatives with curriculum costs a lot of money. However, if we're looking at time, the secondary math, they're not involved in the elementary directly. They are indirectly, the chairs, right?
The, so staffing-wise, there's not the overlap in terms of the demand on time. But yes, in terms of program purchase and timing.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
So I just have a couple of quick more things. I, a couple slides. So we did just have our full day in service, November 5th. I would like to say it was very successful. We were able to offer over 60 sessions in districts to staff. These six, the majority of the 60 sessions were presented by our own staff, for staff, which is something that we have done for the last few years for our full day in service. It is always probably one of, you'll see, the most highly or positively rated PDs. But I would also like to point out, we did have some key half-day sessions this year that, the first two in particular, that staff, that was one that they were essentially required to go to, because those are key areas this year, supporting the work at the secondary and elementary level. And, and the C-stag, which I'll talk about just as quickly. So staff participated in that in either the morning or the afternoon, and then they had choice for their second session that was either, you know, the flip-flop of that. At the secondary level, we're focusing on tier-one instruction to support multilingual learners. So we had two half-day sessions, one for our BIS staff, one for our BHS staff. And then the other session, they were able to choose. Same with the CKL implementation. So again, continuing to support our staff, the implementation of our new literacy program. And then C-stag, one and two, this is our new threat assessment process. And so this was training that was conducted for a large number of our student services staff. There, for the other half of the day, staff would, they selected from sessions that were offered either in district or from the collaborative, all Cape Day. I will say that most of our staff did opt to go with our in-district sessions, because they were top-notch. And we did have sessions for our AAs. Our paras participated in those, the tier-one and the CKL, and they also had choice for their second session. And just quickly, again, feedback, so overall, the professional development options were relevant to my role. So the blue and the red, the majority of our circle graph, our pie graph, were agree and strongly agree. And while we get a lot of positive feedback on our sessions, again, the full day in service and the choice and the options by our colleagues, just without fail, really positive. Always just checking the overall structure. So we had the morning session and the afternoon session. So even with one of those being somewhat selected for, but the fact that they had choice as well, again, positive response on that. And then although, and I can give you a list of all of the offerings, but, so this is quite general, but the AM session, general feedback. So this just dug a little deeper. So for AM, which was, again, this was 48 different sessions. Strongly agree and agree, the predominance, although we saw some more neutrals. And then in the afternoon, I think we had 46 different sessions. Some were duplicates, again, and we had 50, over 50% strongly agree and 32% agree. And again, some neutral. So it really is a, it's great when it's over. But it is, it's really, I think, to see staff engaged and in the variety of offerings is really exciting to see. And then my last two items, just quickly, although I don't have all of my information, so I apologize. But I did want to add on, you had mentioned Andre, the winter concert. The high school concert is December 10th at 6:00 PM in the PAC. BIS, I apologize, I don't have your dates with me today, but I will have them for our next meeting. And BUE concerts are January 14th and 15th. Grade four is January 14th. Grade five is January 15th, and those are also at 6:00 PM in the PAC. Mean Girls also mentioned is 7:00 PM in the night auditorium. Wanted to make sure we had the location, 21st, 22nd, 23rd. And if you want tickets, I am gonna read the website. Is HTTPS colon backslash backslash R-O-U-R dot show backslash Mean Girls BHS DC. Drama Club. So tickets are available. It's organized really nicely online. And so it looks like it's gonna be a great show. And then my last item, I had the opportunity to attend the Unified Basketball Senior Night on October 28th. I, the community field, the involvement, the pep band was there. Part of the cheerleading squad was there. The football team was their own cheering section. The volleyball team was also in attendance. Parents, students. It was an incredible community event, and everyone had an amazing time. The seniors were, you know, introduced, and I had a parent come up to me at the end, and she said to me, this is the best school event I have ever attended in my child's school career. To see the community come together and the kids cheering for one another, regardless of what team they were on, was just an incredible event. And I would have to echo her sentiments. It was fabulous. So I hope their, their season ends tomorrow. They have a jamboree, no, Friday, at DY. So I would encourage next year when we start having some more home games. It is a wonderful event to go to. And that's all I have.
Really glad to hear about the Unified game and the support from the, the students, and then also the work that goes into professional development. You know, those, that's, a lot of times you don't get a chance to see your colleagues, you know, and interact and spend time, so I'm glad that it went well.
All right. As we close the routine business and the school committee reports, I'm gonna ask, Andre, could you please provide a report next meeting on the Cape Cod Collaborative? We haven't had one since you've been appointed. And I know they've had some pretty important things that have occurred. We do have families in our district who attend the collaborative, children attend the collaborative. It's also, these changes impact our budget. They had a fee increase effective this year. They had a new special education director hired. They have a new executive director that's been hired. And I believe their contract was on tonight's agenda for the collaborative. These things all impact our budget and our families in the district.
Kathy, if I can respond. So thank you so much for noting the Cape Cod Collaborative, who, to your point, and we did have a meeting today. I'm here, rather than at that meeting, and so, you know, that's a part of the reason why I didn't speak to some of what you mentioned. But since you did bring it up, I, I wanted to, to note that the collaborative hired an outstanding, outstanding employee. Dr. Jamal Mosley has joined their staff. It's not directly in front of me, again, because there's just meetings at the same time. But he works in their waypoint program, and Dr. Mosley actually has a connection to Barnstable having applied, and I just think he's a tremendous addition to the collaborative. And also to have him here in Barnstable is wonderful. I did sit for the interview for the new executive director. I apologize, I don't have the name directly in front of me, but the assistant superintendent in Mashpee was selected as the next executive director of Cape Cod Collaborative, and I, I think there was a strong support. Three district leaders interviewed, and that will be the new executive director. I think she's gonna come in and do an outstanding job. And you will hear that report next meeting as a part of my subcommittee comments.
Do you just have any idea when she's, when is, when is she starting? When is Paul leaving, I guess? Do you know when Paul's leaving? I'm just, we all know Paul, so.
Yes, and Paul's, again, Mike, the way the, the meeting is, tonight.
No, no, I get it. I'm just wondering, do you know, have any ideas? Just because, I'm just curious, just because I would like to stop by and see him.
Agreed. He's wonderful, and I will have an update as a part of my school committee comments in December.
All right, item 5.1, new business, school improvement plans. Do we want to start with Ena Cobb, or do you?
Sure, yeah. So pleased to have our principals here from pre-K to three. And similar to the school improvement plans presented at the last meeting, they are aligned with the district improvement plan, particularly goals one and two. And first up, we'll have Sasha Negron from Ena Cobb Early Learning Center come up.
Hello, everyone. So do I click?
Yes, you can click, you can click through the beginning part. There you go.
Here we are.
Is your microphone on?
I don't know. Is it?
Sounds like it is.
I just have to do this. Okay. So for our school improvement plan this year, culture of belonging, a safe, inclusive climate, and a shared vision of student success. Where I'm really working on cultivating the environment where our students and staff feel like, you know, they're working together, everyone's getting what they need, and having really good, open and continued, meaningful communication with our families, and making sure that everyone's voice is heard for students, staff, and our families. And the second point, rigorous curriculum and effective engaging instruction that is aligned with the vision of a Barnstable graduate. We, last year, implemented the three cheers curriculum, and so this is the second year. So we are doing a lot of, in our PLCs, instructional PLCs, working on that. It's brand-new to me, too, because I was not there last year, so I'm learning right along with everybody. So that's actually been great. I've been learning a lot. And also, you know, we really are working on the differentiating of, to make this curriculum accessible to all our students, and based on their needs and how they, what they need to meet their goals with that. Like, even like, making sure we have like, the right supplies, anything like that. Because, you know, all of our learners, they learn differently, so we really are working on that. And for this, our school objective, data-driven decision-making and shared responsibility. I am a special ed teacher at heart, and data is always, but has always been really important to anything I plan or implement. So we are working to identify the growth and needs by using appropriate assessments and tracking tools. So we have assessments that they use in the classroom, individual assessments. You know, there's a lot of data-taking just on observation. And just with that, so just trying to make sure that we're getting all this data before we're making any decisions and identifying where the students' needs are. And then last year, there was a student support and decision-making guide that they were in the process of putting together. So it's really a rough draft right now with some missing pieces. So myself and our special ed staff are working on that to update it, and so then we can implement it. And, you know, basically, it's, we want to make sure that everyone, again, is getting what they need and based on the data. So this is all decisions based on data. And, you know, our, our first inclusion is really, you know, our, our main goal. Like, all of our kiddos, we want them to be able to experience what everybody else is. And this guide will help us determine, you know, where everybody needs to be placed, how we can move them around, so everybody's, again, is getting what they need and getting the best learning experience. And that's me.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, very briefly, what is the three cheers program?
It's, it's a preschool-based curriculum. And again, I'm really just learning about it. You know, it's a literacy program. We've been lucky to, well, I've been lucky to have the training along with the teachers. We've been lucky to, well, I've been lucky to have the training along with the teachers to, you know, to work with it because, like I said, you know, a curriculum, it's hard to reach everybody with a specific curriculum and, again, being a, you know, a special educator, you know, I found it difficult in the past to have a curriculum actually like meet our students' needs. So, we're using this and manipulating it where we can, where it's still, you know, we're getting the results we want, just so it's meaningful for everybody.
Any other comments? Thank, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
It is. And you're saying to the kids, am I?
You never realize until you come up and stand at the podium how hard it really is.
Very willing to admit that the 5th grader and 4th grader are going to outdo me, just so we know.
I say it to the kids because I actually mean it.
They were wonderful, phenomenal. Okay, so, I'm talking about the Barnstable Community Innovation School, school improvement plan. And the first two are based, aligned with our district initiatives. The first one being the culture of belonging and a way to feel like you belong is if you are continually communicated with, both ways. So, we're working really hard to create and continue robust and inclusive communication with all B C I S stakeholders. We do weekly hoots, which is staff communication. We do the family smore letter, which I get the privilege of putting together, but it is contributed by everyone across the board, P T O, counselors, teachers, students. It's been phenomenal and really well-received. A rebuild of our student council. We're really fostering our relationship with a fabulous P T O. I cannot speak more highly of them. And our innovation plan renewal team. We are also increasing community outreach and relationships through our community clusters. This year, our cluster coordinator is not a staff member, but a community member who had her children go through and do it and feels so dedicated that she's come back and she's broadening the reach of our community outreach. We also have worked really closely with the B H S community mentors. We have them come once a week to all of our recesses. It is just so rewarding. We've also had the community members work with staff in P D and do some circle work. And also, increasing our school volunteer opportunities. We're really looking to bring in beyond student teachers, but partnerships with Bridgewater State and the Four Seas and create ways where those students that are looking to become teachers come in and volunteer within our school. The next one is the rigorous curriculum and instruction that is aligned with the vision of a Barnstable graduate. We are finishing year three of a tiered literacy grant and it was focused on the science of reading through the five pillars. So, the first two years was real P D in the science of reading and then the teachers at each grade level worked on a particular pillar. Now, they have celebrated that and we're sharing all of that and then the focus is becoming using data in all formats, formative, summative, within the classroom to really drive that instruction using the science of reading. We are, although we're not part of the GLEAM or the C K L A, we are using the T N T P walkthroughs to provide feedback and inform professional development with our literacy, literacy grant consultant. And then the last is, we have an S T math program. It's a zero language concept-based computer application. And in looking at the data, I think it really, really, really makes a difference. So, we have teamed up with S T math and the 1-8 Foundation to do a data analysis and review all of what we do beyond with our curriculum and this and see if it's really making the impact that it looks like it is. It's pretty powerful stuff. The last two are just specific to B C I S. The next one is the innovation plan renewal and rebuild. I really look forward to coming back and speaking to you with the committee in January. We have had the fortune, thanks to Sarah, of working with Kathleen Smith, a consultant, and she has been beyond valuable. She has helped introduce us and we've gone on site visits of other innovation schools. We have a really invested team of community members, parents, and staff that meet weekly, every Tuesday night, helping us rebuild and look at the plan. It's been really quite impressive and we are anxious to present the plan to all the stakeholders and get consensual agreement that we can do this again because we really think it makes a difference. The last one is, in the short time that I've been in this building, I have been really impressed with how the teachers have an all-hands-on-deck approach and they use so much of what M T S S represents, those multi-tiered systems of support where students are scaffolded along the way. That being said, there hasn't been a lot of formal understanding in P D of basically what the scope and structure of an M T S S is because it's not a meeting, it's an entire structure. So, one way is for us to work together, I'm going to work with our M T S S team and we're going to establish a flow chart and framework of protocols, basically a blueprint, so that when a teacher or a parent or anyone wants to understand what it is, it helps everybody be on the same page. It also helps where if you know the way things flow and how they get there, it takes off the teacher, the parents, executive functioning to have to figure that out. So, it makes it a much more streamlined, uniform approach. Part of that would be to re-establish our M T S S data, data team meetings. We have data team meetings infused with the P L Cs. However, I think we can work together to really create a proactive approach, even more so than we have now. That's one of the benefits of a strong M T S S system. And then the last one is, in doing all of this, it will help us develop P D to help infuse M T S S practice into the school culture so that it becomes second nature. Those are my.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Forbes and we're going to talk about B W B. So, you will see that this, we have the same first two and a lot of it is a continuation from last year, so I'm not going to go through everything, just anything that might be a little bit newer. For belonging and safe and inclusive, inclusive climate, you heard a little bit when Andre kind of showed a little bit of our author. But, we are partnering with Belonging Books and we have written a Cobb grant to get four authors in this year, one for each grade level and it's been so great already. We had Gabe Ribero, who actually was a Barnstable graduate and family is from Brazil. He has written a book and illustrated it and he was our first author in. Great job with the kids. And then we had Stephanie in. She has written the first book that has characters from Panama and she herself has that experience. So, that was really great. She worked with our whole school in an assembly and then worked with just our 3rd grade to write their own little mini-books. So, it was great. We have two more authors coming. We are continuing with our interests pathways in that we've already done our first round, which was incredible and we've had a lot more community support this time around and a lot more parents and the feedback has been incredibly positive. So, we're going to continue that, we're going to do it one more time towards the end of the year. And kids get to work in their interests areas for just a short period, 9:15 to 9:45 in the morning, trying not to bump into any C K L A, but it's, it's, it's incredible to see the whole school working at once in something that is so important to them. We see no behavior at all. We see kids just invested in the learning and parents and community members all working together, so that's been incredible. For rigorous curriculum, you're hearing a lot about C K L A. Teachers, you know, I hate to say that overwhelmed is a negative word because it actually can be a positive word too. They are overwhelmed with so much that they are doing and they are so proud of their kids and the investment that they have in this program. So, I can't say enough about how hard everyone is working to try to make this work. Today, we had one blip with the internet or something and it was, wah, you know, we couldn't do the knowledge piece or we couldn't do this, but they are all really, really doing it with integrity and that's so impressive. So, really, our whole focus for our academic piece is around C K L A and our E L A. And then our last goal is around social emotional skills and we are taking a look this year, there was a code of conduct that was developed in 2020 and then COVID came and we kind of let it go as a district and everybody took pieces of it, but we're going to really dig into it this year, take another look at it and see how we can make it work for B W B and what pieces we can integrate. We're also beginning to look at zones of regulation, which is another program and, you know, trying to think about how we can merge all of this together in the best interests of kids. We also are looking at our incident referral form, everything kind of coming together in groups with our teachers to see if there's anywhere we want to improve or any way we can kind of merge this all together and then have a document that is a code of conduct. We're providing P D around staff for, for really a lot of the staff on safety care and not that everybody's going through the full safety care training, but a lot of the staff is going through the beginning piece was just with the, which is just the de-escalation piece and that's really valuable for everyone involved. We are creating some FAIR plans, which is based on the work by Jessica Minahan. We read her book last year as a staff, The Behavior Code, and we're working on creating some of these plans for kids as they come about and that's been really positive as well. We even created some at the end of last year on particular kids and we're able to pass those on to this year's teachers and have a solid start of what things might trigger a student, what works really well to get them back on track, what are the things that are really special to them. So, we've been doing that as well. Only other thing I'll say is we did this more newsletters as well and I've been doing it for parents and for staff. And one addition this year is I'm adding these three school improvement plans every single time and then adding a little piece that goes with each one that's happening in the school so that it's just becoming, you know, part of the fabric rather than just a document that starts now and doesn't live fluidly through the year. So, that's that. Any questions?
Yeah, I just had a comment. Belonging Books is outstanding organization. Erica Sohades does a tremendous job and so, those visits will be impactful and that's a great collaboration.
Yeah, she's, she's incredible. Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you? So, I'm here in my, I guess, junior year, my third year entering in principalship and in looking at the school improvement plan from my first year last year and to now this year, much more collaborative piece, brought in my school council to really look at it with me as well and get that stakeholder feedback, ask them to hold me accountable so that it isn't just a one-time document. I mean, really having it be more fluid throughout the year. What I'm finding is it's really hard to separate into just these four buckets, if you would, because everything is just overlapping. So, the first two that we have are the ones that are district and the culture of belonging, safe and inclusive climate and shared vision for student success. So, really looking at chronic absenteeism, which is something we've, we've looked at each year that I've been there, noticing some of our subgroups flop. We're kind of in, in the same space. We've reduced it somewhat, but not as much as we'd like to see. So, why is that? So, we're really kind of weaving in our morning walking program and trying to encourage students to come and walk, asking more community members to be a part of it. We have firefighters who are pretty consistently walking with us, trying to stab, establish a buddy program. So, students who identify who are chronically tardy, because that's part of the chronic absenteeism, maybe matching them up with either a community member or staff member or even an older student in the school that they can have, be a walking buddy. So, it's someone they're looking for to get onto the track and motivate them to get to school on time. We are actually also hitting our absent students a little bit quicker and a little bit deeper, having faster conversations, noticing after the four or five absences, trying to identify why they're happening. Is it Mondayitis? Is it Fridayitis? Is there something they don't like in school and how can we help families get students in on time on a regular basis? And then, increasing participation from volunteers and looking at different ways that our families can volunteer. So, we have some traditional things that have always been thought of for parents to sign up and come in and do, but just identifying new roles. One of the newer things we started last year is one of our 3rd grade teachers is doing a newspaper club. It's really exciting and they're creating a paper document, which is really great, that goes home in backpacks. So, just getting different ways families can come in and community members can come in to support us in volunteering. In terms of curriculum, you're hearing a lot about C K L A and the continuation of GLEAM. I do want to say I'm so proud of not only Centerville teachers, but the teachers across the district. So, as principals, we're assigned to a grade level that we're supporting at virtual P L Cs at our P D days and the teachers are really, they're grappling, right? They're uncomfortable in some of their spaces. They've been used to teaching E L A in a very specific way, knowing what's going to come, knowing kind of what to expect, predicting how students will perform and this is so different for them, which is great. It's exciting, but it's hard. Teaching's hard work, but this is adding another layer. So, the fact that we have given them what they asked for, we've given them consistent P D, we're giving them time, we really have a focus and are allowing them to really implement this program in the way it needs to be done to meet our literacy vision and meet the needs of our students, at the same time remembering because it's new, there are those gaps, right? So, if you're a 2nd grade teacher, your children didn't have this program in kindergarten and 1st grade. So, there are a lot of pieces. So, you use that O-word, overwhelmed, right? I'd like to say they're grappling, they're doing a great job, but it's a lot. And so, again, they're really, really living up to it. The bar is up there and they're, they're matching that bar. So, that's where a lot of our focus is happening. The walkthroughs are based on some T N T P work that we've done and to continue with that. And then, in addition, we are working on, we started the vision of a Centerville graduate. So, we have what a Barnstable graduate looks like, how at an elementary school are we prepping our students so they can be successful when they finish in Barnstable, meeting those marks as well. So, we had initial work and we're going to try to continue with that. Then our school ones, our school objectives, again, around data, M T S S, you're hearing a lot about that. It's really diving and digging in deeper to that. We're really looking to create what we're going to call an M T S playbook. So, again, similar to what you've heard from a couple of other schools, how are we restructuring our team? How are we looking at that data? How are we putting together the documents we have, the intervention plans that we have so that it's an easy access for students to achieve their success with those interventions? Looking harder at data, a little bit deeper, actually, we're really, I'm excited that we're really looking, because we have our sub-separates and so many children in our I L Cs, really looking at behavioral data with our B C B A and having some consistency in how we're taking that data so we can really use it. So, identifying certain behaviors that are popping across perhaps all five I L Cs and so, a school-wide response. So, there's consistency so that anyone who's supporting any of those students are using the same language, the same visuals, the same approach and we're hoping to see a decline in some of those behaviors. So, that's just a little flair we have because of our population in our building. And then, developing an E S L family engagement plan was something that we started last year to move and continue with that. We did launch a couple of our family coffee hours, which were really successful, exciting and what happened was not only us being able to support the families, but they connected with one another. So, we actually ended our hour and we had to go back and teach and some families stayed together and continued with their coffee and donuts, just getting to know one another and finding some common ground to support one another, which was really great. And we're going to try to develop a newcomer kit, if you would, a welcome kit. We've already established for our multilingual families, having meetings initially with the family before they start, as some of my other colleagues have done. It's very successful, making them feel welcome, trying to give them some more supports when they come in and then creating an online library of resources for those families as well. So, it's academic-based and then some wraparound supports for them. And then, just expanding that logic. And then just expanding that logically to our greater community as well, but just a little bit of a focus on our ML community. This is what we have for this year coming up. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
Yes, for me, I like what I'm hearing about this morning walk, getting the movement, you know, the fresh air, particularly for our elementary students and then students across the board. Tremendous, you're talking to a hyperactive adult. And I, you know, it's just, you're young and there's nothing wrong with that. I think sometimes it's misinterpreted and I appreciate the focus on attendance and looking at how we can just address that and find ways to bridge that gap. And then kind of, you know, because I'm receiving feedback related to attendance and so starting off at the elementary level. And so if it's corrected or those bridges are built at the elementary level, then as they move forward, they'll be established and it won't be an issue, so.
Well, you are more than welcome to join. We do from 10 minutes of nine till nine o'clock every morning. So come on over and you can walk with our students and Star, she's out there too. So, thank you.
So I just have one question. Do you have anything?
No, no.
Actually, three.
Okay.
First of all, do you remember the days when they, the children would get off the buses or dropped off and head all head to the playground? Those were my favorites. So I like the walking buddies. I think it gets their energy, they have their social connections and then they can get to work. And I think that was great for helping the behavior. So my guess is that the walking buddies is doing the same. My question is, I think it's great that you're using the common language for, especially with that specialized population and trying to be consistent. Are you also sharing that common language with the families? Because we know that if, if the child is hearing the same language at home as he or she is hearing in the, in the school building, that overall it could, it could help with the behavior success. So I just wondered if there's any thought to educating the parents on the common language once you have it all set, because that might help, help with them.
Sure, that's a great suggestion. We do now offer to our parents when we meet with them, so when we make something called a social story for a child, so it is addressing behaviors or fixations children may have with certain things, ways to help them regulate themselves. So we always offer to share copies of those with our families at home, so they're hearing it at home and in school. But I like the idea of once we identify those, some of those behaviors, to share that out as well, because parents are often seeing similar behaviors at home.
You know, I picked up tips along the way too, from listening to how, you know, I remember one thing, tell them what to do, not what not to do. And that was a change of my language in my household, because my gut reaction was to, you know, don't do that. But trying to reverse that language around, especially with a special population with how they do it. And I'm, I'll be anxious to see your vision of a Centerville graduate.
I know, I am too. The initial was, it was a really great start. We haven't been able to get back to it, so I really want to move us forward with that. So, thank you.
Just want to say how impressed I am with all my colleagues. They're such great speakers. Here I am, 14 years in, I have my notes, I got my glasses. So thank you so much for the opportunity to highlight the amazing work that is being done at Hyannis West. While a school improvement plan can sometimes feel like a list of new initiatives, this year's school improvement plan for us, it feels like a, like all the pieces to the puzzle are finally coming together. While not identified in this year's action steps, the work we have done and continue to do around social emotional learning and student attendance is embedded in our school culture and climate every day. Having students in their seats ready to learn is always our top priority. This year's action steps are aligned with district objectives and were identified based on input and feedback from stakeholders. While there are fewer steps, they really encompass a lot. So the strategic objective number one, we will continue the professional development for staff focused on culturally responsive family involvement. So I want to have a huge thank you to Maura Buncho and Carla Costa from the Family Engagement Center for sharing with us the culturally responsive family engagement strategy that they have learned through the Department of Education. A couple of small changes that came as a result of that professional development, we're revising the name of our school-wide events so all families could have a better understanding of the event. For example, Open House, we changed it to Family Night. Open House doesn't translate as well for families. Walkathon, same thing, doesn't translate well. We changed it to the Hyannis West Community Walk. It can be confusing, so just changing those names, we noticed a marked improvement in engagement in those events. Another recent example came with our parent conferences and it was brought to my attention that a conference can mean a gathering of many people. So families had said that they were asking, are other people going to be there? It was just a confusing, it became confusing and maybe caused some not to attend. So perhaps in the future, we'll call it a family meeting with a teacher or something a little more simplified so that it increases attendance. But we continue to grow and reflect in that area. Another step is to increase family engagement opportunities connected to curriculum and we are off to an amazing start. In an effort to engage families with the new CKLA curriculum, grade levels have planned some culminating activities and they will do so for at least two units. So far, as you saw in the pictures, thank you for sharing those. We've had the Nursery Rhyme Olympics, Breakfast with Paul Bunyan, AKA Mr. Curry, he did a great job. And we've had an afternoon tea. And students were super excited to share what they've learned and we all know when students are excited, the families come. We are going to provide resources to support learning at home. So last year, as part of our school improvement plan, we, we started some family sessions, some information sessions, monthly. And they weren't great, they weren't well-attended and we really reflected on why. They were a lot of work, but we thought the overall goal was to just share important information with our families and to provide them with resources to support their child at home. So we decided this year, let's stop doing what didn't work and let's tap into the times when our families are already present in our building, such as PTO events, family conferences and grade level events. So leveraging the time when families are already in the building will allow us to share the information that we want to share, maybe take five minutes of the time when they're all in the building and it will be more beneficial when we kind of tap into the, and leverage that time when they're already in the building. And we're also going to improve our cultural representation within our building. This was an item on the Youth Truth Family Survey that was below 70%. So we want to ensure that our school and classroom environments reflect the diversity of our students and their families. We also will use S-MOR, you've heard that term tonight a few times, as a tool to enhance our principal and classroom newsletters to include pictures so that everyone can see and feel themselves represented as an integral part of the whole school community. As far as rigorous curriculum, we are completing, like BCIS, the third year of our MTSS Tiered Literacy Grant. This year, nine educators in our building were part of, are part of a team that attends monthly coaching sessions and what they do is disseminate the information they learned to their colleagues. We believe that the work done the last two years gave us a head start as far as research, learning about research-based instructional practices and teaching literacy. It also helped us to identify effective progress monitoring tools to enhance student growth, which Andre, I appreciated your progress over perfection, so I appreciate that. This year's sessions will help us continue to improve our data meetings in our MTSS process. Like the other, my other colleagues, we will be implementing CKLA, the teachers are doing an amazing job. There are a lot of components to this one action step. In the spring, I'm happy to say that 10 of our staff members representing general ed, ESL, special ed, Title I specialists and paraprofessionals all took part and collaborated to develop our school-wide master schedule. That's not an easy job at all, but they did it. And in addition, prior to each unit, teachers identify any additional resources that are needed. I don't think we thought about that maybe ahead of time, those, all those little things that they need, index cards or all the little things that they needed, they're looking unit by unit and when they need something, we're trying to get those resources to them as quickly as they can. We also continue, we have continuous professional development during those in-service days and as Kim mentioned, during those virtual PDs as well that are necessary. And school-based learning walks as well as walks with TNTP and our Tiered Literacy Technical Assistant, which is, we're going to have those this Friday, will enable us to consistently monitor the implementation of CKLA. We'll be able to identify, identify some glows and grows and support students and staff along the way. And our last school objective is data-driven decision-making and, and shared responsibility. So at the time, at the same time that we're implementing CKLA, we're also started a co-teaching model for multilingual learners. This means that during the CKLA knowledge block, there is a general ed and an ESL teacher delivering language and literacy instruction together. While it would have been ideal to provide this, a year of PD before implementing this, as is in much of education, we're kind of building the plane while it's flying. We hear that a lot. So far, every gen ed and ESL teacher has received a copy of the book, Co-Teaching for English Learners. They will also participate in three virtual PD sessions with the author of the book, Andrea Honigfeld. We're in the process of identifying roles and responsibilities for co-teaching as well as protocols for co-planning. All of this while continuing to provide relationship building, because as we know, building a trusting, positive relationship is really the cornerstone to successful co-teaching. And finally, our last action step is to develop a school curriculum accommodation plan, which will be utilized to improve our MTSS process. We're currently embedding the D cap into our MTSS meetings, but we really want to collaborate to develop our S cap that is unique to our school and that clearly identifies tier-one accommodations for academics and behavior. So I really want to take this opportunity to just thank the High West staff, students and families who really live the plan every day. They're really doing the hard work. The collaborative effort on everyone's part is what will enable Hyannis West to connect all the pieces of this puzzle. As a school community, we'll continue to learn, play and grow together and that motto is now solidified on our brand-new beautiful sign outside the front of our school, which was the result of an extremely generous donation from a former Hyannis West family. So I just wanted to thank them for that. So we're excited for the school year and I thank you again for the opportunity, especially, this is a great night. It's a long night for all of us, but it's a great night. I have lots of notes from my colleagues' ideas, so I always leave with just as much as I come in with, so, thank you.
Questions, comments?
The sign looks good.
It looks good.
I was going to the grocery store the other day and I know, and that's new.
It's great, I love it.
Yeah, that, I, I was going to mention that thank you to the Houghton family for donating that sign. It was nice to see it, it's nice and bright.
Yeah, and thank you for your support on that. It was a process, it took a while, but it was, it's great to see it out front.
Everything's a process, right?
Right?
It's a public institution.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me back for what Kim said is our junior year now as our third year as being principals. I want to start by saying thank you. We had all of our old rugs replaced with new flooring in our classrooms and they look absolutely beautiful. So I want to thank you for your support in replacing those finally. We're, it's a process and we're not completely done with everything yet, but we're getting there. I want to start by kind of saying some of the similar things that my colleagues have said, but at West Villages, I feel like in this third year, we're finally getting that real feeling of the culture of belonging at our school, with our staff, with our students and with our families. So we have piloted the zones of regulation to support our students' social emotional learning and we are off to a fantastic start. When we have already started looking at our data for our referral forms, for our students' when, behavior forms, they have decreased immensely. So our school counseling department has worked tirelessly to roll this out and in that way, they're teaching the staff, the students and us as administrators how to talk the talk and walk the walk of staying in the zone when you're at school. So we've, we still have our starfish as our mascot, but we've started giving out lucky ducks. So I brought my little lucky duck because staff and students get a lucky duck. So last month, we started off with a celebration, if you're safe, responsible and respectful at West Villages, students got lucky ducks. And on the next slide, you'll see the celebration that ensued. They had a big dance party in the, in the gym and had a lot of fun with each other. You can see one of our students, our third grade students, in one of the duck costumes and some of the kids that their choice is to go out and do bus duty with us and wear the costume and wave to all the bus drivers and all the kids when they're, you know, getting on the bus. So it's been really, it's feeling really good and I feel like it's just permeating our school with this feeling and this sense of belonging. So we love that. Our school counselors are also going to attend the PTO meetings this winter to teach the families about the zones of regulation so that they know how to talk to their children in the way that we're talking to them at school and have it be really inclusive and effective across every environment that the students are in. So that will be coming down the pike and the counselors are also going to do a survey for the parents so that when they're at those PTO meetings, they can address some of the parents' concerns. How do I get my children to do homework? How do I get my child up in the morning and off to school without, you know, some type of tantrum happening, which we've probably, probably all experienced in our lifetimes. So they are, it's, it's really feeling good and I think our team is really driving the bus forward and it's, it's great. I think there was one other thing I was going to mention with belonging. Oh, our wonderful Kelly Burge, who's our art teacher, has started Artist of the Month. So the artists of the month are pictured here. They are one from each grade level, K1, 2, 3, and their pictures get posted up in our office, framed and posted. They get a special certificate and then we take their pictures and we celebrate them. During those celebrations, when we have like, you're the lucky duck for being safe, respectful and responsible, we are celebrating the artists and we are also celebrating attendance. So we're working really hard this year to improve our attendance. We received the Care Counts Grant from Whirlpool to get a washer and dryer. Their motivation in this is to help with attendance. So we already have the washer and dryer, it is almost installed, everything is there and almost ready to go. And instead of our nurse doing laundry every night when she goes home for kids at our school, we can now give kids some clothes to wear, wash their clothes, send them back home in their clothes that they came in. So we're going to open that up to families. Families will be able to schedule a time with the nurse to come in and use those facilities if they need to. And we know that in some cases, we have some families that really could use a washer and dryer. They are providing us with a year's worth of laundry detergent too. So it's, it's pretty incredible. So we're ready to get it into action. We do have to, as a matter of fact, on November 15th, send them our attendance data so that they can track it with us. So we'll be able to see, is this helping? Is this something that's helping our school and our kids come to school every day? The CKLA, the rigorous curriculum is off to a fantastic start. Our teachers, again, are really welcoming this wonderful program. It is a lot of hard work, but for me, who's been, I've been in the system for a really long time, I would have to say, this is one of our best rollouts for a program. I don't think we've ever had this much PD ahead of time, even getting the materials in our hands. So everything that the GLEAM team and the TNTP did was to benefit our teachers and our students in rolling this out in probably the best that I've ever seen a rollout happen. So I'm encouraged in looking at this with what could happen with math as well, if that's the type of rollout we have and the type of team that we have. The other thing is that we're not just planning and doing PD as individual schools, we're planning and doing PD across the district K to 3 so that at all of our schools, our teachers are able to collaborate with one another. And again, that has felt more inclusive in bringing everyone together this year to work together, to share ideas. The full-day PD, I think for my school, all I got was, this was incredible. This was a great time to sit with colleagues across all of the elementary schools and work together. work together towards a common goal. So keep that going, because I think it's fantastic. Here's our picture of our celebration for attendance and the lucky ducks. This month, we are going to be focused on gratitude. Teachers showing gratitude and staff showing gratitude when kids show up to school. So our celebration at the end of the month will be for the grade level that has the best attendance at the end of November. So we're trying to not just work as individuals, but like, as a whole team across grade levels. So this last part is our MTSS school-based model. Again, it's in its third year, so I feel like we're making better strides now. We're really streamlining our process. We're strengthening our interventions. We are looking at attendance weekly, sending out letters, making phone calls, asking families, hey, how can we help you get your child to school? We want to help you. Tell us what you need from us. Again, it overlaps with that belonging, rolling out the zones of regulation, and working on that school-wide positive behavior, and holding those celebrations for monthly attendance and behavior. We are increasing our communication and really our coherence in our meetings with interventionist counselors, the nurse, special educators, and ESL teachers, so that we bring people together, so that everyone knows what the plan is. We want to be really, really together on this, and I think it's starting to really show, which is wonderful. And kind of like Kathy said, we have the D cap, and we're rolling out our S cap and supporting that. We're using that during our MTSS problem-solving meetings, so that we look at those documents and think, what of these accommodations can we use to support our learners, so that they can get the furthest that they need to get? One other little picture here is, I wanted to do a shout-out to BUE. It's nice that they're on the campus with us and that we can do book buddies or study buddies, and they just can walk over, and our kids can walk over there, too, which is really something unique that we love. So, and the smores, it was a little tough for me to learn the smores, I'm not going to lie, but the younger staff has like grabbed on to it and rolled it out in their classrooms and said, we can teach you. We'll show you what to do. So Assistant Principal Bissonette and I have collaborated and are sending out smores newsletters to all families, because it translates to so many different languages. So it's a work in progress, but we've sent out now three newsletters in smores, so we're kind of proud of ourselves. But, do you guys have any questions?
Peter? Andre?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Interested in the comment that you made, you know, regarding students that come to school and need a fresh set of clothes, and that you have secured grant money to be able to have a washer and dryer, so that in some, in instances, those students can now get a fresh pair of clothes. Well, now you're going home, you have a fresh pair of clothes, now you're going home with a fresh pair of clothes. That's incredibly innovative, and I'm going to be following up with you on that, because, you know, that's, you know, in terms of this attendance, you know, and bridging that gap, again, at the elementary level, and a lot of the have noted a number of things, but I will be interested in that and following up on that, and thank you for mentioning that. I'm somebody that's from the great state of New Jersey. You don't have to comment, but I feel very proud about that. And I only bring that up because there was a national story about a principal in New Jersey. I believe it was at the high school level, but that saw, you know, that this was an issue and did something similar in terms of securing grant money to be able to have the resources for the students to be able to have, you know, the clothing that they felt comfortable in, and it made a notable, notable difference. So I'm not saying that we're there, but, you know, I'm glad that we're thinking in this innovative fashion surrounding attendance to be able to really deploy all sorts of resources. So thank you for bringing that up. Thank you for what you're doing in that capacity. And we see where it goes. You know, there's not a one-size-fits-all, but we are, we're looking to address the needs of this community, and that's very encouraging to hear.
And we're hopeful that it does help our attendance. We tried to get it last year, and it was all filled, and for whatever reason, in August, I spoke to the nurse. I was like, hey, let's see if that's available again and see if it's open, and sure enough, it was open. So it just worked out. It was great. We'll see if it helps. We hope so.
So it's nice to hear that you're going to implement the zone regulation, so that the families are aware. I would be, I know S, this S word is dirty. You don't want to do too many surveys, but it would be interesting, at the end of the year, to find out how many families implemented the zone regulation, and then whether or not they saw an improvement. So maybe something very quick and easy to gather that feedback, because if it is supportive, people may jump on the bandwagon and be more proactive at home in trying to work with the schools.
I agree, and at the last PTO meeting, I spoke about the zones of regulation and saying that the counselors were going to come in and do some work with the families so that they would understand the language, and I mentioned a few things, and one of the parents said, oh, that's what he meant when he said. He was, he had hopped out of the box or whatever verbiage, and I was like, yes, that's it. So I think it should help, and I am hoping doing it at the PTO meeting actually raises the attendance at the PTO meeting and serves a dual purpose, so, thank you.
Okay. That was it. Thank you so much to all of you. Long day, early morning. You're welcome. Oh, happy birthday.
Birthday. Uh-oh. Does that mean we have to sing it?
We could have put you first if we knew that. Then you could have gone home.
I won't sing happy birthday to you. That would just get ugly.
It's okay. It's tough to be thirty-eight.
I thought twenty-nine, so.
Okay, so we're on item 4.2, approve the superintendent evaluation for 2023, 2024. This is a follow-up to last month, when the superintendent provided her documentation. Each school committee member met individually with the superintendent to discuss the evaluation and followed up with an individual written evaluation that uses the DESI standard format. These were compiled into one overall evaluation for the superintendent. Thank you, Jen Krusick, our executive assistant, who compiled those and captured everything. Her overall evaluation is proficient, I'm pleased to report, and that would be the end of the process, would be to approve it.
So move to approve the superintendent evaluation for 2023, 2024, as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.3, approve the superintendent goals for 2024, 2025.
Thank you. In your packet are goals for 2425, and I want to start by saying, in putting these goals together, reflected on the feedback from the individual committee members, both in writing and in our one-to-one conversations, and I really appreciate the attention that you all gave to providing the specific feedback. And I put some draft goals together for your consideration. I did run them by Kathy as chair in advance, just to see if I was perhaps on the right track. And similar to what the principals talked about tonight, and maybe what I foreshadowed a little bit last year, is that I think we're in a spot of kind of sustaining some more intense work over time, and so goals, every year, we reflect on them, but we consider whether or not and how they might need to be changed. But the core of these goals kind of remains the same with a focus on, because I think they should be tied to the work of the district, and holding myself first and foremost accountable for that work, and then that leads to goals of the principals, it leads to goals of teachers, focusing, since we're doing so much on literacy, particularly early literacy, with CKLA implementation and then the facilities. So I will go through these quickly in terms of the process. That was my self-assessment based on your feedback, and so thank you. And now we're at the analysis and goal-setting of the process. And so overall, you approved the district improvement goals in September. We've since heard about school improvement goals, and tonight, I have professional goals for student learning and professional practice, and then focus indicators for the coming year. They're tied to the district improvement goals, and I tweaked the student learning goal for 2425. In terms of capturing improvement in how we're doing around literacy, this is grounded in MCAS for the district, and it's grounded in the accountability measures that the state has for us. So all of these are tied to increasing the scores for MCAS ELA. The accountability scores are tied not to percentages of proficient or exemplary, but it's tied to the benchmark raw scores, which then get translated into what you typically see kind of in the newspapers and in public reporting. And so I tweaked this slightly, but the first two measures, English Language Arts Achievement for non-high school grades and high school grades, would seek to have them improve to a target of two or higher, two, three, or four, which would mean that we're improving in our ELA/MCAS scores. In terms of growth, we are seeing low typical growth for ELA, so I'd want to at least sustain that, if not increase it to a more moderate high growth or even high growth, which is very hard to achieve, but moderate high growth would be great across the district. And then because we are also focusing on our progress towards language proficiency for our multilingual learners, we are making excellent gains by accountability measures for our non-high school grades with a score of three out of four. I'd want to sustain or improve that to three or four. And we are investing very heavily, six through 12, in tier-one, focusing on multilingual learners. We are working really hard to support our English language teachers. We are fully staffed, and so at the high school level, want to see that zero improve for language proficiency at the high school. In terms of professional practice goal, my draft continues to focus on facilities. I think it is a really big and important need for the district, and I really, oh, he was here, Doug Bellinger was here. Look forward to working in partnership with him to take this to the next level in terms of leveraging the facilities' condition and capacity assessment. I'm continuing, I think professional practice goals should be rooted not just in what you produce or do, but what you learn, and so continuing to engage in professional learning related to school facilities. I've learned a ton about indoor air quality. I didn't include that on the slide, but I'm starting to think about the evidence already. But then also address short-term and long-term capacity. So we're still evaluating, and we'll come soon to you with some sort of analysis related to the additional portables, potentially at BWB, potentially elsewhere, but that's probably the best site for it, in addition to space mining. And then long-term, working with the facilities subcommittee around a strategic capital budget, pursuing accelerated repair program submissions, should you approve of them. This is not, I do not mean to imply that your approval of my goal would pursue the statement of interest, but looking into it. So it's pursuing or exploring statements of interest for accelerated repair program and the core program. And then in terms of the superintendent's rubric, I am suggesting focus indicators that align with the focus indicators by and large for our school administrators and our educators, and they are very, very similar to the ones from the 2324 school year. One, focusing on instruction, which I think is an important one, again, in that self-reflection and analysis. You know, that's an area as a district that we're focusing on, because we're seeking to elevate instruction in classrooms, and evaluation is a method of feedback by which that happens. Management and operations, also including environment, which was on last year. Human Resources Management is not a focus indicator for the district, but I am suggesting that we keep it for my personal evaluation, given the role of the superintendent in managing and overseeing personnel. BPS administrators instead have scheduling and management information systems, which... I think you heard a lot about today actually dovetails really, really well with things like MTSS, for example, and how we're managing instructional blocks with a new program, things like that. Family and Community Engagement, 3A. It had been sharing responsibility, so this is kind of flipped back to engagement, welcoming and encouraging every family. And Standard 4 is a little bit different than last year. Commitment to High Standards, so fostering a shared commitment to high standards of teaching and learning. Again, this would be consistent for our BPS administrators and educators as well, towards that shared vision in 4E. So I'm happy to take any comments or questions and would ask for your support.
Peter?
Yeah, I fully support. It's very complete and comprehensive set of goals, for sure. You know, after reading your evaluation comments as well, I mean, I think all of us are concerned about, I always use that rigorous curriculum, the, for example, the MCAS scores, how we need to improve as a district, so I think you've covered it all here in these goals, and I certainly approve of them.
Andre?
Again, for me, scores and getting those scores up is certainly central. You know, in terms of my evaluation, I was clear that there were certain areas that needed improvement.
So Andre, the evaluations in writing, and we've all had a chance to discuss it, but if you could limit your comments right now to the superintendent's goals?
Most certainly, Kathy. I will limit my comment to the superintendent's goals. And in looking at these goals, Kathy, I do believe it is incredibly important that we focus on the MCAS scores. Additionally, Dr. Hearn, a focus on recruiting and retaining a diverse staff to reflect this community is paramount. So again, speaking to your goals going forward, what I was alluding to, Kathy, is what was clearly noted in my evaluation for the previous year. I am hopeful, Dr. Hearn, that this essential goal for student achievement is focused. It is something that we see progress, because the two are linked, as far as I'm concerned, our achievement and drawing from the total capacity of eligible employees to make Barnstable the best that it can be. Thank you, Kathy, for clarifying. That's my comments related to the superintendent's goals.
So I think they're good. I think you're kind of going down that same road. My only question I have to you is, and it's not you, it's me, is the first one where they had the chart where you go up two-plus and all of that stuff? It's not even about the chart. So is this growth or is this numbers?
It's both.
Okay.
It would be both the achievement, overall achievement and growth. It's both.
I remember you and I always have trouble with that.
I've been on here, though, for nine years, Peter. You would think I'd get it after a while.
It's both.
My growth is zero. My, okay.
You could be a participant in the math program pilot.
I have to take my shoes off to count. No, so, okay, so this is on, this is on both sides. Okay. No, I think this is perfect goals. I think it kind of goes with all of our concerns. I think it's... I think it's, I think it's well-rounded and exactly perfect. So thank you. I would definitely support it.
Is there a motion?
Oh, sorry, let me put my glasses back on. Move to approve the superintendent goals for 2024, 2025 as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second it.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.4, revised policy BEDH, public comment at school committee meetings. This is the first read. There were some small revisions that were based on MASCE suggestions after I attended the webinar on public comment. And it just provides some clarification. This is the same rationale behind item 4.5, revising policy BEDH-E, which are the guidelines, very similar, but they still tell us we need both. And it parallels the same changes. And then item 4.6, revised policy JH, student attendant. This was revised to clarify when written notification is required from physicians or other medical staff.
Yes, Kathy, maybe I'm wrong. I thought we agreed to five days, and it says more than five.
We did have that discussion, and let me look at it. Just had it up, got to get the right one.
And while you're looking, go ahead.
You know, we did have that discussion. We'll have to take a look at Jen's minutes. But remember, we were talking about, could somebody be out for five days if they had COVID? So we were thinking that if it extended to that, that next week...
Yeah, that's not my recollection, but I, you know, I could be wrong. I thought it was three days, and more than five is what, six, seven, eight, nine?
Well, the former policy was three.
Right, and I thought we moved it to five.
And we moved it to...
But it says more than five.
I know, that went back and forth. So what I'll have to do is, we can take a look at that and look at the minutes.
Yep, okay.
And then based on the minutes, we can capture that.
And I've also been contacted by a couple of staff members as well about attendance. Is this any time to bring it up or about our changing that from three to five?
For having the, well, yeah, absolutely, if it's related to the policy.
Yeah.
So are they four?
Well, you know, I've been enlightened a little tonight as well, especially with all the elementary principals as well. Literally everyone mentioning the attendance issues. And, you know, I know we have ways to improve, but I didn't know how, I guess, encompassing through the whole system it is, the whole attendance issue. The concerns I got from staff members was moving it from five to three, three to five for a doctor's note is concerning to them because if you say just four days, I certainly remember our discussion saying, have you ever had a kid that's been sick for three days and you didn't go to the doctor?
Right.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. But they're concerned that now it's more of a, you can go up to four days without a doctor's note. That could be a vacation in, you know, Florida from... Yeah, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, yeah. And, you know, it's just, hey, my kid was sick. And so I guess I didn't think of these possibilities when we have in this discussion. And it's just brought to my attention.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Just because I wasn't involved in these, so, but I have kids. I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, couldn't, can't you only, so that's like, what you're talking about is how many days you can be out before you need a doctor's note. But if you don't get a doctor's note, aren't they not excused? And therefore, can't you only do a certain amount per quarter before you get a letter?
Good question. Your policy has additional types of excused absences defined. So it includes personal illness, medical appointments, death of a family member, inclement weather, observance of major religious holiday. We have a system to code that it's verified with medical documentation. So there might be excused, and there might be excused verified where medical documentation has come in to support it. The state does not make any determination or any distinction between excused and unexcused. So all absences are part in the same category. What happens, though, is the more unexcused absences there are, the more letters go out at the five-day time period.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is it happened, the reason I'm bringing it up is apparent. It came up last year with my daughter. I think she had the flu like towards the end of the year, and I didn't bring her to the doctors because she just had the flu, like there was no need to go to the doctor for it. And then all of a sudden, I started, we started getting a letter, like then she took another day off. I think we might have gone and looked at colleges or something happened. And then all of a sudden, we got a letter, and I was like, whoa, wait a minute, like what happened? Like what did we trigger? So that's my, like, so when you're talking, when you guys are talking about not needing a doctor's note or needing a doctor's note, wouldn't there be a trigger anyhow if they were sick a certain amount of days per quarter?
So there's an expectation that the principals are, both individually and with the team, reviewing attendance on a regular basis. There should be a daily review, there should be a weekly review. And then the team get together on something like a monthly basis to review attendance. And the question came up with the principals about where would you rather spend your efforts and time? Chasing documentation or following up with families who need more substantive intervention plans or students who need more substantive intervention plans to get to school? And so we're trying to strike the right balance because the medical notes, they also present, well, there's a couple of things. One is, you know, families making the decision to keep their child home and not going to the doctor, or the doctor not wanting to see them because it's a relatively...
It was just the flu.
Normal, routine type of illness.
It wasn't like a bad flu either. It was like, take some Advil and...
And then, on the other hand, especially here on Cape Cod, getting appointments can be a challenge. Having a regular medical provider can be a challenge. And we do have families that struggle with that. So we're trying to strike this right balance of creating a system that works for Barnstable that, you know, has expectations for attendance, but it's not so compliance-heavy that our administrators can really focus on the more tangible work of meeting with families and developing action plans when there are attendance concerns.
So I guess my thing, and I'm looking this strictly as a parent, is, like I said, Hallie had the flu last year, and I didn't bring her to the doctors. And then I got a letter because she had another day where she had like a sinus infection or whatever. And I got, we got a letter over it. And it was like, okay, now I need to bring her to the doctors every time she has something for the rest of the quarter? No?
No, I think, so I think with clarifying your policy with our buildings and what is considered excused, and then what is, you know, excused with verification from...
A doctor.
A doctor. We're sort of creating more consistency and parsing out excused versus unexcused.
Okay.
And then if patterns are seen or habits are seen, and if there's certainly chronic or irregular attendance, the team at the building would follow up.
I guess my thing is, as a person who never had, had four kids go through Barnstable, had never gotten this letter before until my fourth child, ever seeing a year, the last quarter, like, I kind of just worry about families that are being, not burdened, but like, I mean, it costs you 20 bucks or 50 bucks or whatever your copay is every time you go to the doctors. So that's, not everybody has cars, so then you have to get to the doctors. To me, and I don't mean to blow up your thing, I honestly don't, but, and I understand, but if, I think it should be more about the chronic absenteeism. Like, if the child hasn't had it all year, then all of a sudden has it for a week. I don't see that as big of a deal. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm completely missing the boat on this one. But it's more about the people that are, yeah, they were all five days in the first quarter, five days in the second, five days in the third. And like, to me, that's more of the problem than the kids that are, get the flu and I have to bring them to the doctors every time they have the flu.
Part of one...
And I don't mean to blow up your whole talk.
No, 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 I think, no, I think we should maybe, we can take another look because if we get input, we need to take another look. That's the whole purpose of a first read. So one, I recall, one part of the discussion was trying to make sure that the policy was not too restrictive with needing the physician's note for those very reasons, but a good number so that they were legitimate absences that could be tracked. And with that discussion, not having a timeline, we have to have a timeline because if we don't, we have to be careful because the perception could be we're allowing one person and we're not allowing another person to have to bring a note.
Didn't it used to be, and I could be completely wrong, wasn't it at one point that the DA's office, you had to have 10 days cumulative, and then after, or maybe it was like six days? There was something to do, I remember the DA's office sending out letters, and it was something to do with like more cumulative than like three days here, four days there, or whatever it was. Maybe that was true once, maybe I'm wrong, but to me, it should be, I would think it should be more cumulative. And I understand that you want to get to the person that goes to Florida, but on the other hand, you can only do what you can do, you know what I mean? Like, if they think it's important to go to Florida with their kids, and it's okay to miss four days worth of schoolwork? I mean, parents kind of can make that decision for themselves, too.
I agree. I was mainly talking about saying we had a, we had a number of five, not more than five. I thought we had five. And then I talked about some staff that contacted me saying, whoa, you're moving it up to five? Already we have this chronic issue in the schools. We also have, farther down in our policy, the student absent notification program. The principal meets with the student who has missed five or more unexcused days. Is that, that's happening as far as you know?
I would say that it has been, it's a reasonable effort to meet with the student and the family. And we have just put new attendance tracking procedures in place to bring more consistency across all the buildings.
Okay, because that was also noted to me. So these are, these are the concerns people have as this came out in the first read, so.
So we'll go back to the minutes. And I did, I did send my draft, and we were discussing, and we were going back and forth. And so I'll check the minutes, and we can bring it back and have a discussion again.
Okay, that's good. So my contribution is that I've heard from staff members and the perception is that parents can call in and therefore the absence is going to be excused. So Sarah, can you speak to that perception? I'm reading, I'm reading the policy here. And it says that excused absences are limited to categories set forth above. Okay, and there's, there's a one and forth, good. But I just, you know, defeat, you know, there's perception, and you noted it just there, that this is bringing uniformity across schools, which I think is the right thing to do, to debunk, to dispel this perception that, again, some people can just call in and, you know, Suzie is out because of, you know, and that's excused, whereas others have to go through, you know, certain kind of steps.
So just strictly going through your policy, you've got definitions of excused absence, and ultimately that the principal or their designee has the authority to determine when a student's absence is noted as excused. And so, you know, we certainly want there to be consistency. We want it to be fair across the board. But there are going to be individual circumstances where the principal may say, I think in this circumstance, this is concerning, excessive. But on the other hand, you have, you know, a parent could notify that there's personal illness. And there might not be medical documentation if it's a few days. And we would consider that excused.
Like I said, again, that's what I think where we need to, that needs to be squared away because I think that's the loophole that the perception is, again, that parents are calling in and therefore allow, and then, you know, because the parent calls in and just goes to this personal illness, then the absence is excused versus the parent calls in and said, listen, you know, we had to go to, you know, Pennsylvania, then that's not excused. So I, that is an imbalance, you know. Parents shouldn't just be able to call in or we need clarification on that one because if that's the go-to, then that's what people are going to use. And I think that's what's creating the perception amongst staff members and then students that there's this out around the attendance policy.
I think, I think the, in the excused absence section, they list eight kinds of absences that are considered excused, and that would be across the district. And anything that doesn't fall into those categories would be unexcused, according to the next section there. The physician's documentation is under personal illness, but when it gets to be a certain length of time, they, the school would require a written note. And so that, there are, I think the reasons are listed. And there is no, I don't think it's unclear what constitutes an excused absence.
Thank you, Kathy, again. So, you know, my, if you use personal illness up to five times, at the fifth time, then we would need the...
No, it's consecutive days. It says consecutive.
And that may be, yes, to look at it because, okay, Suzie's out two days, personal illness, Suzie's out two more days.
Yeah. And then whatever... And then there's, there are policies in place for total number of days that students miss. And so there would be another area that...
You can definitely get around it.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was, I was just going to say, no matter what we do, people are going to find a way around it. I mean, I could just say that I have a family member that died every, I could have a thousand family members. No, but I'm just saying, like, I guess, take back what I said, like, I would say just go with the best way you can because, to be honest with you, that's only one portion of the eight reasons you could be excused absences. So you're not gonna, you're not gonna make it 100%. So I would go back to whatever you guys decide. If you decide five, five or more, go back to three, whatever you want to do, I would be, because there's other ways around it. So I'll be honest with you, as a parent, I never realized there was this. So I guess I was, never realized it, so, and I never realized about the phone call.
And I didn't either. I'm learning, and then when I get feedback from staff saying, oh, this is happening, this is happening.
Yeah, I didn't realize that.
It's good to get the feedback. Does anybody have anything else to add? All right, so we'll get a meeting on the books, and I'll let you know after I check with Jen. Item 4.7, approved revised executive director of special education job description.
Great, thank you. So I'm asking for your approval this evening of a revised job description for executive director of special education. I've been communicative, fairly communicative, that wanted to move towards one more consolidated director position in the central office for special education. And if we are to initiate a search, that would, we would want to get that going probably right before, you know, early December after the next meeting. So tonight's the first step towards sort of reorganizing the leadership of special education, both in central office, and then ultimately you'll see some proposals elsewhere in the district. And so tonight, asking for your approval of the revised job description. And we'll talk more about the position itself on the next meeting, if, as Kathy and I have kind of conferred about.
Questions or comments? Mike?
Oh, sorry. Move to approve, oh, no, wait a minute. Move to approve the revised executive director of special education's job description as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second it.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 4.8 is being deferred to the December 4th meeting.
Thank you.
Item 4.9, a discussion to expand the school committee to seven members. Item 4.9, a discussion to expand the school committee to, to seven members. So, I actually had been thinking about this for a while. Barnstable is a large district, and we have only five current voices representing all the taxpayers. And by expanding it to seven, to keep it an odd number, two more people would be available to get two different, two additional perspectives on matters, and to help us serve on the various committees. It seems like when people are first getting on, they're a slow start. They ease into a subcommittee. As people are coming off their terms, they sometimes ease off a bit to transition new people, so there's continuity. And so, I did provide a document that identified why this is brought up now. This is a lengthy process. It's not a decision that school committee makes. However, I, I think it begins here to get your feedback on whether you think five should remain, or we should increase. And then, it, ultimately, we have to have the charter changed. It's an amendment to the home rule charter, and it actually, there's a state procedure. So, I provided all the different pieces. I reached out to the town clerk just to make sure she was aware that we were talking about this tonight, because if the committee is in agreement, then my first step would be to reach out to Ann Quark to find out what our initial process is, because she's the person that would be the one to have the guidelines. So, I'm not sure if, I think that's all for giving a general overview. I highlighted one section of that document that actually pertains, but I wanted to provide more detail, which is why it's a few pages.
Yeah, I was wondering where this came from, so thanks for clarifying that. Generally speaking, I believe the fewer on a committee, the better. You get more things done. That has been my experience for many years. And I know this is a large town, and I do know other school committees are larger. I assume Franklin was larger, Sarah. And maybe we are the fewest. I don't know if there's any school committees with three. I'm not, I'm not sure. So, we're, we're probably amongst the lowest. But, I mean, you know, having been a teacher for many years, this, in Barnstable, this school committee works. It's, it operates successfully. You may not always agree with the school committee, but we get things done. We now have sometimes seven-hour meetings with the five of us. I can't imagine adding a few more people onto this. You know, these meetings would go on forever. Again, my experience has been the fewer, you want something done, you do it yourself. Okay, add a couple more. Okay, you get three. Okay, add a couple more, you get five. The bigger this school committee gets, I, I think the more slower it operates. That's just been my experience in life, and for being on many committees as a school teacher, et cetera. I understand you made a good point about committees that we are all on, and we do a lot, you know, we, Kathy, you do an unbelievable amount of work. So, that does make some sense. And as you said, you know, somebody gets elected in, they go slow. I, I do remember when I got elected, one of the first things, well, you got to join committees. I'm like, what? I don't even know what these committees are. Hurry up, tonight, which one do you want? And I was like, I don't know. So, I do get that. Maybe you can prep the, the next school committee members better, but that part makes, oh, yeah, sorry.
Wait a minute, I was the chair at that time.
I forgot about that. That part makes sense, but personally, I'm in favor of keeping it at five, and I'll, I'll stop there.
Andre?
Yeah, for me, you know, kind of, you know, being in the town and, you know, working as an educator, you know, you follow what the Barnstable School Committee is doing. And, you know, it's been this way for, for, for some years, time immemorial, almost, you know. And so, the change, kind of, I wasn't sure, you know, why, you know, we were looking at it now, because my leaning was, you know, it's, this, this is the Barnstable, the composition of the Barnstable School Committee. This has, you know, been established, you know, over some years. And now, kind of, being on the school committee, it's, you know, you, you sign up for this, to, to do this work as is. Is it work? Do we have to, you know, kind of bend things? Yes, but there is, you know, you know, this is the bed that we made, and so, we're kind of sleeping in it. The reason, you know, so beyond just precedent, why I'm in favor of the current model is because, you know, for myself, running for school committee and throwing my hat in the ring, you know, there was five people in that race for two seats, you know. So, it, it was, it was nip and tuck, you know, to be able to kind of get to this place. And I think there's something in that, you know, that you have to, you, you, you need to compete and, and fight it out, you know, in order to have this seat, you know, in, in terms of the large district that we are. And, you know, it means, it means a lot in the town. And so, that was kind of my, you know, I, I had to really work, you know, and I came in a very close second, you know, to even be here in the first place. But looking at it kind of historically, you know, in 2019, you know, three people ran for three seats, you know, so there was, you know, you know, 2020, you know, I'm going back, but my point with this is 2023, 2019, 2017, you know, people ran uncontested, which, you know, a lot of times, you see that, you know, it was incumbents that were able to stay, okay. But, but I do, you know, so, so we have people that are interested, and we have some competitive races, and then we, then some of the races are not competitive, but you have incumbents that want to stay and are staying. And so, the reason I would, you know, if, if it was different and we had seven, you know, there was more numbers running consistently, then you would say, maybe we can expand it. But because, you know, again, you know, and Peter won by a comfortable 200 votes, you know, and then I was, I was quite close with my 27 margin, you know. But, you know, that hasn't always been the case when we've had elections, and therefore, that's why I'm more so in favor of the current model.
So, it's interesting listening to you two guys, because to be honest with you, Kathy and I talked about this, and I was like, well, put it on. Let's have the discussion. That's where it has to start. And I was kind of in favor of going to seven, and the reason was more because of the workload on us. Like, just, we all know how much time we put in, right? Like, it's a lot of work to be on the school committee. This is, being in these meetings is like very, very minor compared to the whole thing of the amount of time we put into being on the school committee, and especially as the chair. It's, it's unbelievable the amount of time. So, but listening to you two guys talk, to be honest with you, I agree with you. Like, I agree with you, Andre, as far as I, the first time I ran, I think there was, it was three, I think there was six of us running for three spots. And then, the next two times, there was no incumbents leaving. So, I have had, those two you talk about, I've had nobody run against me. There was three people for three slots. So, my concern is if you make it greater, you have to put a little effort into run, for the most part, when you're running your first time, at least, right? So, if you're watering down the amount of people and everybody always gets on, what type of candidates are you getting? You have to be really wanted. You're, you guys are 100% right. And that makes sense. Like, so what the quality of candidate are you going to get? To be honest with you, I know it's been brought up before, was brought up when I was the chair to me multiple times, about, well, at least the chair should get paid. I disagree with that, and I was the one who was going to get paid. I think you do it for the, if you, if you're getting paid, you're doing it for the wrong reason. You're doing this because you want to make the school system better and all of that. So, I, I agree with you. You guys changed my mind. I, I wasn't 100% sure, but I agree. I think we should just stay with the five, and just realize, if anybody ever wants to run, realize there's a lot of work that's happening behind the scenes, and there's a lot of subcommittees you got to get on, and the chair isn't always good about explaining things. So, but no, I agree. I, I say, keep it the way it is. If the workload is doable, you kind of know what you're getting into, and therefore, I, I keep it, keep it the way it is.
Okay, so, and just to speak in favor of seven, my other thought process wasn't just necessarily about the total workload on individual members, but some things that I feel like we should have in place that we don't. So, for a district this size, we really should have a finance subcommittee. We really, from time to time, have had subcommittees for special purposes. And so, I was just thinking of expanding the viewpoints and expanding the outreach to the community, because we know how much we're contacted individually when different things come up. So, if there were two more people, they would, I would guess, have the same direct. So, I'm not sure what I'll do with this since Jen isn't here. Maybe have one more quick discussion next meeting before we decide and determine what, what to do.
So, one of the things, I did a lot of research on this when I first got on, and I did a lot of research even when I first became the chair of the school committee. So, two school, school committees are kind of run in two different ways, at least in Massachusetts. You either have subcommittees that the committee, and it tends to be the smaller committees, they do everything. And then, when you get into larger, like, the, the biggest one I've ever heard of is Wachusett Regional School District, which is where I'm from, had 20 people on it. And I remember talking to one of the people I actually know that's on the school committee, and they're like, nothing ever gets done. So, to your point, the bigger, they're like, literally, nothing ever gets done, because there's 20 different people with 20 different voices. So, that's the way, so like, somebody like their size or a bigger school committee tends to have a lot of like, like Kathy's saying, like finance committees, they'll have facilities committee, they'll have, literally, nothing is done in the school committee meetings. Everything's done in subcommittee, and all they do is give their reports, and they vote on their reports, and that's it. That's one way that's done. And then, the other way it's done is the way we do it, where we're kind of, all the five of us are more or less involved in everything. So, that's just for clarification, Kathy, that's kind of the way it works within Massachusetts.
Item 5.1, fiscal year 25 quarter budget report.
Good evening. Each quarter, the finance department provides the school committee with a quarterly financial update on the financial status of the school department, the school district. And closing your packet are three reports. One is a detailed line item operating budget report that makes up 90% of the school department's budget. The other report is our revolving fund report that details out all the funds that we have that are considered revolving funds. And the third report is our capital fund report that details out both the progress made on our capital project portfolio, as well as the overall financial state of, of those projects. So, accompanying those reports is a memo that summarizes our financial state. Our financial state is good. There's really nothing more that I can add at this point. I'm happy to answer any particular questions on any of the reports. One thing that I will say is that while our current fiscal year '25 is looking good at this point, we do have some concerns about future years. That is a secondary agenda item here. I think Sarah wants to cover that, but I'll stay up here if there are any questions on the numbers or the methodology behind that. But happy to take any questions on the quarter one FY '25 reports.
Any question?
Great.
Okay.
Good job.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Yep. So, we're on two fiscal year '26, '27, and '28 budget forecasts. Sarah?
Thank you. So, Chris and I put together this presentation to preview the next three years, because as he alluded to at the end of his quarter one report, while there are no immediate concerns, we do have concerns looking forward. And I didn't want to wait until budget development time to put this out on people's radar screen. Partic, and I feel like timing is really good with the joint meeting with town council having happened just a couple weeks ago. And so, I asked Chris to put together a three-year forecast with a few assumptions. So, as you know, on October 24th, you had your joint meeting to review the financial condition and financial policies of the town. I think by and large, there was a lot of good news there related to the financial condition that was presented. There were a couple of points noted that this presentation, I think, serves to emphasize and make more specific for the school department. The conclusion of his presentation, Mark Milne said, like, we're in good shape, but there are a lot of needs. And I have shared, you know, our financial forecast with the town, again, because I don't want to wait until later on in budget development to, to make our concerns known. The town manager and I have developed the annual policy agreement on allocating projected FY '26 general fund revenue growth. That was also alluded to at that meeting. We have initiated the budget development process, and we will start meetings with sites on Monday, or starting very early, because we do think that this is going to be an even more difficult budget to put together than FY '25 was. And then, the budget calendar will continue forward with an initial presentation to you in February, if that's how you want to keep it. So, the projections that we have for you in this three-year budget forecast are largely level service. We did make a couple of exceptions, because they're sort of like must-dos, although, and very reasonable. One is to increase the maintenance budget by $300,000 each year, and adding $400,000 as an escalator for out-of-district tuition. We also naturally include some measure of a placeholder for wage increases in FY '28, even though that has not yet been bargained. The school-town revenue share assumption is that it continues at a 60-40 split, and the model assumes a 4% annual increase appropriation from the town, noting that the current FY '26 appropriation is 3.29%. Another assumption is that we are no longer going to see big bumps in the Student Opportunity Act, Chapter 70 funding, that we will receive minimum aid through Chapter 70. And I put here, usually, that falls somewhere between $30 and $100 per pupil, usually on the lower end in recent years. You know, the, the governor comes out with $30 per pupil increase, and then the Senate and the House kind of adjust it upwards. We've seen 60 in recent years. We've seen 100 in recent years collectively across the, across the state. So, that's another assumption. We're planning to apply savings as proposed last year, where we absorbed about $2 million in ESAR funds, and we paid for that with $2 million in savings. That was 100%. So, continuing to apply ESAR savings, but decreasing it 75, 50, 25, to continue to support ESAR-funded positions. And then, we've been, after free cash is certified, there's been a replenishment to the savings account, and that's been a recent trend and somewhat consistent. So, there's an assumption here to use $900,000 annually from savings to help offset the budget. That does come with a little bit of risk. I think with some of our healthcare costs increasing with the new 70-30 split, that replenishment may be a little less in years to come. And so, here are the numbers where, you know, those assumptions sort of work together. And I'll give you a minute to digest it, but basically, with those assumptions, we are projecting a deficit of 1.1 million in FY '26, a deficit of 2 million in FY '27, and a deficit of 2.7 million in FY '28.
Do you want me to save questions for the end?
Sure, sure. Sure, sure. Because this isn't very long. I think you only have one or two more slides. Actually, why don't, yeah, why don't we maybe pause here if you have questions? Because then I get into some comparisons regionally.
Peter?
No, go ahead.
Andrei? Mike?
Okay, so I feel like it'd be nice to let you guys go first. So I have real, I've had concerns last year, and I continue voicing my concerns about using the savings account for operating budgets of $900,000 a year. I, this goes back to when I first got on the school committee. I am very much about not, you live within your means. And I know last year, we ended up having to cut some positions, but we also decided to continue using $900,000. Well, then this year, I assume BUES and the MOLD and all of that, I assume, is that going to be coming out of our savings at some point? Or is that?
I'll invite Chris to jump in, but the, right now, we transferred from school choice with.
Right, but is that going to have to be replenished? Are we going to have enough money for school choice, or is that?
The school choice account has been, you know, a secondary savings.
Okay, okay, that's, okay.
If the school committee's allowed to vote on. The rate of replenishment is not as great as the.
Savings account, we usually have like that million bucks at the end of the year that from everything we get back, we put it back in.
So essentially, the school choice account will be halved for the foreseeable future.
Okay. So this is using, so in year '28, we only have, what's the savings account ESAR versus savings account, oh, no.
That's the amount that we proposed last year, where we were going to cover ESAR 100% in FY25 with savings, and then we were going to decrease our dependence on savings to absorb the ESAR position. So that's the last year at 25%.
I get it. Okay, I get that. Okay, that makes sense. So Chris, how much money do we have in our savings account right now?
It's approximately $11 million.
Okay, so we're still doing, okay. Okay, that's all I had for questions.
And so one of the things that I just wanted to point out, and I've been kind of keeping tabs on and tracking, is how our spending in town compares regionally. And so there's a couple of comparisons in the next slides. There's both numbers, but I think the graphs kind of tell the picture, so you can kind of dive into the data. So we pulled together, Chris pulled together, regional trends of the percent spending above the requirement. So required net school spending is the amount of your Chapter 70 and the amount of your local contribution. Most communities in Massachusetts spend over the required amount. And historically, most have spent around 30% above their required net school spending. The, there's an increased, it's a way of comparing, in addition to per pupil expenditure, it's a way of comparing spending across districts. Barnstable's the orange line at the bottom, and our percent above net school spending has decreased from approximately 30% or state average down to 17%. Meanwhile, other communities on the Cape have increased above their percent net school spending. Some are seeing a little bit of a decrease, but by magnitude, it's a bigger gap. And while the state average is about 30%, or actually, it's dropped a few points, 27% above net school spending, in the region, it's more like 50%. So I just am concerned with, that we're not adequately funding comparatively in the region. Similar trend, a little less notable in terms of the spread, but the spread is growing, and this is per pupil expenditure with Barnstable in orange. The green line at the bottom is the difference between us and the average in the region, the average per pupil expenditure. And again, there's a widening gap happening related to expenditure. And so I just share these as some relative comparisons. So a couple of key points that I want to impress tonight. We are coming into FY26, having done a considerable reallocation of resources in FY25. We sharpened our pencils. We looked at class size. We didn't fill some retirements. And I feel like at the end there, we were starting to hit into programs with the library position. And so I am concerned, but can't help but think that we're approaching FY26 with efficiencies, reallocations, mitigation measures as best we can, but that we're going to need to reduce based on the current budget model being unsustainable. I know you don't like it, but with $11 million in the bank, there may be a recommendation unless the money's going to come from another revenue source.
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt you there. At some point, the town has to pony up. Like, I'm going to be completely honest and blunt here, like, because you know what? We have $11 million. Well, we're going to take two, almost $3 million out of it for next year. So that puts us down to eight. Okay, we put back in nine. So we're still going down almost 2 million. After that, we're going down 1.3 million. It just, it's unsustainable, like.
And we're increasing our reliance on savings for capital, which we need as well.
Which, that's a whole nother problem of $200 million worth of stuff, because our buildings are falling apart. At some point, it's unsustainable. So we're either going to have classrooms with 40 kids in it, or we're going to end up having, somebody's going to have to come up with the money. There's no magic bullet there, and our savings is not going to last us forever. It's not an infinite.
No, and with increases of 3.29%, it's unsustainable. We ran the numbers, and it's 5.3% to maintain level service. And we continue to see, I'm sorry, I cut you off, but I wanted to add to this, just to kind of quantify what you're saying. Meanwhile, there's great needs, as was alluded to, and in order to meet our school and district goals, we, I think the hard part about FY25 is we're sitting in a good spot financially, but there are requests coming in that we can't fulfill and have to say no to, to support MTSS, to support curriculum and instruction, to support the facilities in an ongoing way. Couple other things, we're experiencing some mounting administrative pressures in central office. So I'm fearful about that in terms of human resources, compliance for the Department of Education with special education, English learners. We have a DESI district review this year. So it does feel like things are continuing to come our way, and adjustments to laws that shift. We will have a new bus contract in FY25. So things that are good is FY26 and FY27. We can continue with a pretty favorable bus contract, but the rates are almost certain to be higher than the current projection. And I feel like there is a real dance here that if it's not attended to, we could have an exacerbating deficit if we lose students to school choice and out-of-district, if we can't support our in-district programs, like increasing our neck services, which we talked about last year, that we then end up paying more when it goes out-of-district. So.
And I'll bring something back that I've heard for, not this new town council, but I've heard it in previous town councils, have been on here for nine years, is, well, education and MCAS scores are tied to real estate in the town of Barnstable. And the first thing people do when they want to buy a house in the town of Barnstable, or Yarmouth, or Sandwich, or wherever else they want to go, one of the determining factors is the school system. And your MCAS scores, people, railtors send it out, and they look at the MCAS scores. Well, we've gotten press report on us saying, you've got to make it better because real estate is based on, partially on where families want to move, which is MCAS scores. And you need money to fix the MCAS scores, pure and simple. You can't do it with a dollar. If you need $2 to bring in reading programs and math programs and all the other programs we need cost money. So the thing is, is you can't make our school system better with less. It all comes down to money. So that's my piece. Thank you.
I think that's my last slide. I will say, I really appreciate the support of the town manager's office. One thing that's not captured here, and we're working really, really hard, but it's not going to cover the entire gap, and that is to increase our Medicaid reimbursement. We have a very, very talented staff member in our office who is almost not 100%, but she's by and large devoted to maximizing Medicaid reimbursement. And we've seen some increase, but it's not nearly to the magnitude that we think we'll be able to bring in and had previously brought in. And it's really kind of an all, all department effort between facilities, transportation, health services, special education, Chris and the Finance Office to get as much Medicaid reimbursement as we can. We hope it's on the order of about $1 million. And the revenue sharing agreement that we created will allow us to keep the entirety of the Medicaid reimbursement. And I appreciate the support of the town manager in doing that. And so that is something that we're doing. And some of the professional development on November 5th brought UMass in to help our staff with the documentation and the things that would be eligible. But that's not going to close the entire gap. And so, you know, I do think that the community is going to need to consider the quality of the schools and whether or not an override is appropriate.
Comments?
Just a question. In regards to the competitive environment that we're in, and it certainly is that with two Sturgises and Pope John Paul, and you can go on and on. We don't want to lose more students due to choice. Is there a trend? Are we losing more? Are we losing less? Do we have a trend? Is it going one way or the other?
Yeah, so I would like to come back on December 4th and present you with an enrollment report that's a little bit more fleshed out. But we, as far as trends go, what I do know is that in this one year, we have about, I think it's 51 more students in public school choice going out than in the previous year. Public school choice is, when we do an exit survey, it's 10%. Like, when people answer why they're leaving Barnstable, the vast, vast majority, about 50% are moving out of town. But 10% are saying that it's for school choice.
Okay, and.
But I want to get back to you on the trends, because we're still diving into it.
Okay, good. As well as their comments and their, you know, like for moving out of town, or whatever the reason may be.
Yeah.
Andrei?
For me, I just need clarification on the, you know, this trend related to per pupil expenditure. And we are, you know, according to this chart, we're last in that. And I just want to know kind of what factors are going into this to put us there. As was noted previously, a number of, you know, you know, these communities that are ahead of us, you know, they're all spend, not they're all, that's not, a preponderance of them seem to have been spending or spent monies in their communities on facilities. And so how is that kind of factoring in? How are, how does that factor in? Why are we last in per pupil expenditure? This doesn't make sense on the face of it to me, when, you know, these other communities are devoting resources, you know, and all, you know, to buildings, A. And then, you know, I know that, you know, our contracts, you know, as an educator, are competitive. Why are we, you know, and all of the money that we're spending on education in Barnstable, why are we last in per pupil expenditure?
So the operating budget in the facilities are, you know, in terms of, you know, town support, the facilities that communities are building are sort of separate and apart from the operating budget. So they would have gone to their taxpayers and asked for a debt exclusion and raised tax revenues in order to support some new building projects or renovations or additions. I mean, I think that there is, I mean, one way to explain it away that, there is a, but it's not going to explain all of it. And that is an economy of scale. So all of these districts have one superintendent. The per pupil cost of your superintendent, when you have 5,000 students, is going to drop. So there's a little bit of an economy of scale when you have a larger district, but that's not going to explain the entire percent difference. I don't know if Chris has anything else to add. I mean, I think the numbers, you know, sort of speak for themselves to a certain extent.
Okay, thank you. Again, just trying to understand this. I know that our teacher contracts are, you know, comparable, if not better, than some of these other districts. Where, you know, our average salary for educators is higher than some, so that, you know, we're spending, you know, we're spending more there. You know, I don't know any community that's, you know, obviously, it's always going to be nip and tuck, particularly with a seasonal economy, an older community, when you come up against that, you know, my kids are not in school, so they're, why am I, you know, you always, so, but every community on the Cape is having that conversation. So that's why, and then, you know, those are my two, and thank you for answering. This will be something maybe for a further discussion. You know, I do know, I don't see, I see Sandwich, okay, you know, DY, new building, Bourne, new building, Nausicaä's not on here, new building. These other communities are, they, they're spending more, in my mind, with overrides, which some communities needed an override to get those new buildings built, others not so much. I just needed to kind of understand, you know, how we are dead last with all these other things, all these other factors, again, in my mind, our teacher contracts, and the fact that we have not as of yet taken that step for a new building.
Mike?
I, nothing.
Okay. So I know this initial thought is that you're proposing a level service budget, but, and I realize that it's a 5.3% increase needed to maintain that, but I'm wondering if it's realistic to think that we can survive with level funding, level service, with a level service budget? Because we have the specialized populations where we have the growing needs, we need additional classrooms, our ELL learners. When I've been thinking about what might be needed to help with those students, some extra bilingual people in the specialty areas so that they can provide that support to the students, I think it's, I think we have a big challenge to try to come up with how to leverage the needs within these constraints. Just to follow up on Andrei, the per pupil expenditure is based on the operating budget, has nothing to do with the schools or the facilities. The capital budget is not, the money spent on capital improvements is not part of this per pupil expenditure, just so you see. So it doesn't count the new buildings. Like, we're low, and they have a new building. This, this one item is not related to new facilities.
Thank you for that clarification, Kathy.
Okay. And I have one other comment. I have had some parents, when they have left the district, the families indicate that nobody ever surveyed them. And so I do think that finding out the real reasons why people are leaving is critical to having our families stay in Barnstable and really making it not just a, you know, where are you going and why, I want a different education or a different setting, but to really get to the root of the problem for why people are leaving. I know some people were very vocal during the COVID, and they left for districts or schools that were doing things differently than we were during that remote learning phase. So I would like to see a better exit survey, and then if that, those results can be shared with the rest of us at some point.
Point of clarification, I just wanted to, the teacher contract, that is a part of the operating budget?
Yes.
Okay, and again, so thank you for, the building is not part of the operating budget, but our teacher contracts, and again, I was just noting that our average. but our teacher contracts, and again, I was just noting that our average teacher pay is greater than some of our neighboring districts.
And so an easy way, if you're trying to figure out how something's classified, an operating budget is one year, all right? So monies that would be spent within one academic year is part of the, is part of the operating budget. Monies that would be spent for a long-term asset, such as a building or, I don't know, what does, trucks for the maintenance department, things, things out of the ordinary. If it were the town, you could say a fire truck, right? Those are capital, capital expenditures.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay. Item 5.3, approve accounts payable warrant fiscal year '25, warrant number 20.
Move to approve accounts payable warrant FY '25, warrant number 20, in the amount of $326,964.41.
Second?
Have an emotion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda, items 6.1, 6.2, 6.3. Tonight's consent agenda includes approval of school committee meeting minutes of October 2nd, 2024, special school committee meeting minutes of October 8, 2024, and the fiscal year '25 grants, gifts, and donations.
Move to approve the items in the consent agenda as presented in tonight's materials.
Second?
Have an emotion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Executive session, move to go into executive session, not to reconvene in open session, to approve the school committee executive session minutes of October 2nd, 2024, and October 8, 2024, to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with the Barnstable administrators organization and a litigation update.
Second?
Have an emotion made and seconded, all in favor?
That's a roll call vote.
Oh, roll call vote, that's right, sorry. Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you.